Radio check for Mark.
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
I can.
All right.
Sound great. You sound great.
That's what I was shooting for.
Welcome in. Good evening. Thanks for coming to your city council this evening. I'm going to call to order February 27, 2023. We have four city councillors here, I R L, and we have three online. So we're all going to get to run a hybrid meeting here. First thing we're going to do is remember to turn off our cell phones. Then we're going to take half a moment to reflect on the fact that folks have been living here for tens of thousands of years. And white folks have been living here for somewhat less than that. And it's an unbelievably complicated and tragic issue, but at least we keep talking about it, we'll at least keep talking about it. Let's say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
This is a time for residents or others to speak to their city council. We have Sarah Fox signed up, and I see she's come with reinforcements. So if you'll come on up and push the UFO till it turns green and then give us three minutes if you would.
Okay.
And girls, will you come on up and introduce yourselves to us?
I am Tate Johnston and I'm seven years old.
Hi Tate, thanks for coming.
You just turned eight.
Yeah, wait, no, I'm eight.
Riley Johnson and I'm 11 and I'm in fifth grade.
Hey Riley, thanks for coming.
Thank you. These are my daughters. Thank you for helping them learn about local government. My name is Sarah Fox and the host and curator of the Sense of Place lectures, which is why I'm here tonight. Quickly, the Sense of Place lectures, some of you guys know, I've seen some of you at them. Thank you. Some of you are sponsors. Gladys was a guest and say alumni of season 11. The goal of Sense of Place lectures is to connect people through place and storytelling. And the way we do that is we have speakers from all sorts of backgrounds who have unique knowledge about the Gorges' natural, cultural, or political history. Come join us. And once a month in October through April, we get to hear from these amazing individuals and sometimes groups of people. So this year we've heard about Lamprey, wildfire, the scenic area. And the one next month is the reason, well, the one just coming up in a week and a half is the one I'm here to talk to you about. Feel very lucky to have Kat Brigham joining us. Kat Brigham is the board chair of the Confederated Tribes of the Umatilla Indian Reservation. In addition to that, she was recently appointed by the Department of Interior as one of only 12 tribal members around the country on the first ever tribal advisory council to the Department of the Interior. And she's representing the Northwest, a place obviously near and dear to all of us. And Kat is going to be joining me for a conversation similar to the one that I was able to have with Gladys when she joined us. And we're going to be talking about everything from politics and history to fish, Pacific Northwest, everything, including even what it's like raising daughters in this area. She has three daughters, one of whom was featured in a podcast here in the gorge on tribal fishing. And the reason I wanted to tell you guys about it is one, because it obviously means a lot to me. But two, people who are public officials mean a lot to me because the work you do is hard and needed and not always thanked you for. And I would love to extend to any of you council people to join us on March 8th at 7:00 PM at Sense of Place as my guest, as a chance to bring other representatives from our area to meet with a representative of a important sovereign nation, neighbor of ours, Kat Brigham. So if any of you guys are able and would like to join, please get in touch. An email's on the sheet. Come say hi afterwards to me. Come say hi to Kat. She's an amazing person and really fun to talk to and knows a lot about this place. So thank you for having me. Thank you for helping me teach my children about local government and the importance of it. And thank you for what you do for our community.
Thank you, sir. Is it at the Center for the Arts?
Yes, it's at the Center for the Arts. You could also tune in. We have a live stream for those who can't make it that night, and then it goes online into our Sense of Place archive. So.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, thanks you guys. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. No one online to speak to us, Jen. Moving on to a presentation from Hood River County Reads. And I'll say to Mark and Gladys, it's difficult to manage all the pieces. So feel free to say, hey Paul, if you want to speak, and I'm not noticing your hand up.
Should I start this?
As long as it's green, you're good.
I've already started. Oh, no. I'm Lori McDonald, and I'm here representing Hood River County Reads. I'm here to ask that you adopt a proclamation in support of Hood River County Reads. Each year since 2006, we have chosen a book that we encourage the whole community to read and to discuss, and also to join in activities that are centered around the themes of the book. And all of this is free, the books. In fact, we've ordered 700 of them this year. We always, they're always used as wonderful and you just pass them on to other people. But the books and the activities are all free to the community. And this year we have chosen a book by a local author, Tina Ontiveris, which is called Rough House. Rough House, as you'll see in the proclamation that I think is in the packets. Really somewhat from the proclamation. Author Tina Ontiveris gives Hood River the opportunity to engage in a personal story of a young girl growing up in Pacific Northwest logging camps and working class towns amidst her family's intergenerational trauma and poverty. There are a lot of difficult challenges that are spoken about in the book, and there's a lot of love also. So we encourage all to read the book, to take part in the activities, which include everything from our kickoff, which is this Saturday. And if the proclamation passes, Mayor Paul Black... Yes, all right. He'll be there to read the proclamation. Great. We have a storytelling workshop. We have for use a kind of creative workshop on what does home mean to me? We have on April 4th, a forum that's called Challenge Lives: Help and Hope in Our Community. And it is, I'm pleased to say that Gladys, I believe you'll be joining us as one of the panelists. It will be, there'll be representation from many of the social service agencies and organizations, nonprofits in our area, bringing more awareness, more understanding and support for all that they do. So all those things, we have writing workshops and the author herself will be visiting the schools and also giving public presentation in the final weekend of our activities, which will be, I think, April 16. So I present to you the books. And also the brochure that tells all about all these things. And ask that you read it and pass it on and that you support the proclamation.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for organizing. I've already started my copy of the book. My buddy Fran hooked me up. It's underway, and I look forward to seeing you guys on Saturday. I've been many times to proclaim support for this, and I hereby proclaim City of Hood River's support for Hood River Reads.
Yay, thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, are we on floodways now?
We are. I believe that we have a couple of representatives from FEMA who are here. And as they finish, please provide questions and comments to them.
I see Ted and I see Deanna. Welcome, you guys.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, I am Ted Perkins. I'm an engineer for FEMA. And so I help to oversee the flood mapping we do for the National Flood Insurance Program, which is a program that your community participates in. So I'm going to give a brief presentation about that update. But before I do, I want to introduce who else is on with me. So Deanna, if you could introduce yourself.
Hi, everybody. I'm Deanna Wright. I'm Oregon's National Flood Insurance Program Coordinator. So I aim to help community staff that get stumped on local floodplain development questions. I help them ID, prevent, and resolve any floodplain management questions they might have. I also perform occasional audits on local floodplain management programs to help them stay in good standing with the National Flood Insurance Program. Thank you.
Thanks, Tiana. And then also with me is Olivia Shod, who is with Resilience Action Thanks, Deanna. And then also with me is Olivia Shod, who is with Resilience Action Partners, which is a contractor for us that helps us when we start doing the outreach with communities. So Olivia.
Hi, thanks for having us tonight. Like Ted said, I'm with Resilience Action Partners and we are a FEMA contractor. And we are excited to engage with the members of your community about this flood update and what it means for them. So thanks for having us tonight.
Okay, so I I'm going to dive into just a kind of overview presentation so you guys can understand what it is we're doing and and why. So the load presentation. And can you see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay, great. So so FEMA is is obviously interested in kind of reducing communities' exposure to to hazards. And so one of those ways is with with informing them about their flood risks. And so we update. So as as part of the National Flood Insurance Program, which is a program which is looking to reduce communities' exposure to flood risk, FEMA produces maps that show what that risk is for a 1% chance event. Sometimes you've heard the term 100-year event because it's has a 1 in 100 chance of occurring in any given year. So on average, it it happens once in 100 years, but it can happen in twice in 10 years and then or not in 200 years. And so it's really more of a statistics based on what's been observed in the past. The reason why we do the flood mapping is flooding flooding is our most costly and deadly natural hazard in the United States. But it's also highly predictable. And so for Hood River, you guys have been in the program for over 40 years. And the the unfortunately, the last update we've done on the flood maps was in 1984. And that's a long time ago. And there's a lot of improvements that have happened since then. And so there's, there's things like we can capture a lot better topography, which is the ground elevations. We can kind of fly airplanes over, shoot 1,000 pulses and know exactly what the ground looks like. We can, we have a lot more years of information about how the rivers have performed. So we have things that measure how much water goes down the river. And so that we've, so we figure out how much water gets in. And then we have these very sophisticated hydraulic models that then take that water, route it downstream, and you figure out how deep, how wide, and where all that water goes. And so we are long overdue in in doing an update for your community. And so that is why we're we're doing this update. The data that we have and the technology we have is going to represent a lot better depiction of of what your flood risk is. And so then you know, just the kind of the gritty details, we're doing the whole county. And that ends up being on our panels, 37 flood insurance rate map panels. It's one, one study for the whole county. And we kind of detail all the nuances of how we developed all that information for for each of the rivers within your community. The detailed work that we did, and so this is where we actually go and hand survey on the ground your streams and creeks. And so we we've, we did that for Henderson Creek, Dry Creek, Rudolph Creek, and Odell Creek. And then for another 217 miles of other streams, and they're all detailed on this map. If you want the, but it, we, we are able to create these hydraulic models off of this detailed topography that we have called LiDAR, which is that that ground that we we pick up through 1,000 pulses from from an airplane that really details to within like a half a foot of of the ground everywhere. And so it really just gives us a good depiction of how the ground looks and then how it slopes and so how the water then moves through it. As part of that, we also have an update from the Corps of Engineers on what that 1% chance flow is on the Columbia River. So we've, we've also updated the Columbia River as well as updating three lakes. So you know, we create these maps for a variety of reasons. It helps, you know, again, identify and and helps you assess what your flood risk is. It does, it has in the past established the rates for flood insurance and it does provide information to help figure out what those rates can be. It it also provides the basis for because you're a participant in the National Flood Insurance Program, how do, where do you build to keep yourself safe from flooding? Whether that's trying to make sure you build outside of the floodplain or if in certain circumstances where you need to build in the floodplain, that you build above that flood elevation in a way that's safe. It's also to just inform engineers and developers as they're making those kinds of decisions. So they can make smart decisions about where to put property or or build certain things. It also helps emergency managers know where those flood risks are. So when things do happen, they know where to watch out for and where where to look to to help. So I'm going to.
The slide's supposed to be moving.
Oh, are they not moving for you guys?
Thank you, Megan. No, we're still looking at the intro.
All right, I'm sorry. Let me try this again. All right, I'm going to pause share, stop share. I'm going to try sharing it a different way.
If you hit the little book, it should work at the bottom on the right-hand side. There's a little, that should make it appear. If you have two screens, it's going to show you the presenter view and then that's the view that you're going to see, but we don't see that view.
Okay, let's see. All right, I'm still struggling here a sec. All right, let me try this again.
Now we're on the second slide.
Okay, all right. So I just, I'll quickly go through the slides that that I went through. So second slide again was just highlighting all the different things that have improved over time. So again, we have better models, we have better computer technology, we have better understanding of the ground, we have better understanding of the flows that go through the river. Slide three, can you see slide three? Just make sure. Yeah, okay. That this is just a map showing the the area that we are covering, which is all of Hood River County. Slide four is all the streams that we're doing. And so on the right side, you see all all the names of the streams that we're doing. And so again, there's the detailed ones where we actually went out and and field surveyed, but we actually have very good information on all the 217 miles of approximate streams from the the LiDAR, which is that the plane shooting thousands of pulses of light to figure out exactly what what the ground elevation is. And then we also updated the Columbia River from the Corbin Engineers information. So then I was just talking through, you know, all the different people that use the flood maps. And and so there's just a lot of people who can can make use of these maps. So at this point, I'm going to slide six and I'm going to have Deanna kind of talk through the National Flood Insurance Program.
Thanks, Ted. So what is the NFIP? The NFIP is a mitigation program developed through FEMA that does aim to reduce the impacts that flooding can have on our homes, families, and communities. Even though flooding is among the most common and expensive natural disaster, most homeowners' policy do not cover flood damage. The NFIP offers a way for homeowners to reduce the physical and financial impacts of flooding. And as you can see from this graphic, it may not seem like much, but one inch of water can cause up to $25,000 of damages to a home. Flood insurance made available through the NFIP can help cover the cost of replacing belongings or repairing a home to help mitigate a community's risk to flooding. But the program is much more than just insurance. Participation in the NFIP is completely voluntary. It's a partnership between communities and the federal government. FEMA provides access to flood insurance for those who live in your area and your community agrees to make reducing and managing flood risk a priority. Note, while a, excuse me, while the NFIP is voluntary, there are implications if your community doesn't participate. For example, flood insurance is not available. You may not get a loan from a federally backed mortgage institution in a high-risk area. And federal grants might not be available to repair buildings in high-risk flood zones. And this last bullet point here regarding adopting and enforcing floodplain regulations, each community adopts minimum floodplain regulations. And as part of the map revision, each community's floodplain code will be reviewed for consistency with the minimum NFIP regulations. And some floodplain development codes may need revised. Next slide, please. So what is the purpose of the NFIP? The NFIP was created in by Congress in 1968 to enable property owners to protect themselves from financial losses as a result of flood insurance, of flood events, and to reduce flood damage through good floodplain management at the local level. The goal of the program was to reduce losses caused by floods. This was to be accomplished by four main goals of the NFIP, and they are floodplain mapping and improving them as technology improves. Two, setting minimum floodplain construction standards. Three, providing flood insurance and mandating flood insurance through lending institutions backed by federal government. And lastly, four, and FEMA is trying to get better at this, is the mitigation activities through increasing resiliency. So I'm able to answer questions at the end of this if people have additional questions. Thanks, Ted.
Yeah, thanks, Deanna. Yeah, and and I'll bring up a little bit of Deanna's role in a minute as well, when we start getting into, as we get towards the end of the mapping process, there is a step to updating your ordinances to kind of reflect all the latest information. And so that's where Deanna and Mitch from our FEMA side kind of help you guys understand what your responsibilities are so you can stay in compliance easily enough. Okay, so the old effective maps that you guys have been using are pretty dated. And so they are paper maps. They're not in a digital format. They're using a zero ground elevation that was tied to the tides back in the day. And so that has changed over time. So we've had to make a number of updates. And so we've gone from that paper map to a very more digital format. And so it's a lot easier to work with. It's a lot easier to pull in your information, like your parcel layers and your ortho imagery and all that stuff to better orient yourself on the maps and to basically better understand where our flood elevations lie compared to where your structures might be. With any update, there's going to be changes. And what the changes represent is really a better depiction of the risk. But but it's also important as we, as these changes occur, we know that they have regulatory impacts and we know they actually have insurance impacts. And so we want to make sure when we're going through this process that we help you understand what those changes are going to be and and basically what you, what you're, you and your constituents can do as these changes occur. So in this update, it's, it's currently looking like, so we're at the preliminary map stage. And so this is where we, we have already been working with your community for five, six years. Making sure we get have all the latest information, making sure that we show it to your community staff first. So if there's anything that just doesn't look quite right, and we know that the community staff are going to have more on-the-ground experience, that they can kind of give us that feedback to make adjustments. And so again, what we're looking at here is that we, in that 100-year floodplain, with all the updates that we're doing, it looks like there will be 33 structures that will be added to the floodplain and 11 that will be removed. And so that, so we're going to start working towards our outreach strategy, and I'll, I'll speak about that in a minute. So you can reach out to these constituents. And we're already working with some of your outreach staff as well as Dustin, who's a head planner and all that to make sure they have all the tools and understand how other communities have done outreach. So we can make sure those are affected, can come to a certain, a couple of different ways that we're going to try and get all their questions answered in in a couple of different ways. So I'll talk about that in a minute. So again, the the process has been, we, we actually probably started in about 2015, 2016, where we first just met with your, your communities and and basically asked, you know, what information do you need? And so we not, didn't just talk about flooding, we talked about all the natural hazards. So there's groups like Dagami, the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, that have a lot of good information on landslides and earthquakes. Because while we're going through this, we want to make sure you're aware of all the risk information that's out there. And then we also can help assess that information so you can understand where you're vulnerable and and potentially the mitigation opportunities that are out there down the road. So as we went through that mapping process, we've, we first had to contract it all. We had to get out on the ground and survey. We then had to do, we had to build all the hydraulic models and and do all that work. And so we first were able to roll out what we call draft maps and hold a flood, flood risk review meeting in October of 2020. And that was where, again, where we got the community's, the city's feedback on, on how the maps looked and any adjustments we needed to make. And so from there, it's taken us about a couple of years to make all the adjustments from the comments that we received where we're ready to kind of, we're ready to roll out the maps to the public. And so preliminary maps are open to the public. And so they are out there and they've been out there since the fall. We just met with city staff as well as the county staff a few months ago to talk about how how do we now do your outreach so that all your constituents know that these maps are out there? Because ultimately, we are going to have an appeal period, which allows people to either comment or appeal on the maps if they don't feel like it looks right. So, you know, as you've noticed, we don't, we don't come around very often, so we want to get it right. And so there's two, two levels of comments or appeals that people can make. And so an official appeal, you have to actually show that we did something wrong. And you have to replace it with all-new modeling, which is a very difficult standard to meet. So but if you do all that and you spend all the resources for that, then if you don't like the way we resolve things, then you can actually go to a scientific resolution panel that's not FEMA and, you know, to make sure that your concerns are addressed. If if you, if you take, if you just provide a comment, If, if you, if you take, if you just provide a comment, we still will make every effort to make the changes because again, we want to make sure we get it right. The only mechanism you don't have is you don't have that ability to go to the scientific resolution panel because they won't have something to decide, you know, do you go with theirs version or our version? So a comment, a lot of times is a, what is the canary in the coal mine? Why doesn't it look right to you? And what kind of technical information could you, could you possibly, possibly bring to bear that might change how we, we came up with that answer? So like one of the classic examples to me is sometimes you have a very detailed survey of your property that shows that a certain ground elevation is a little above that somehow the lidar didn't pick up. And so we can kind of make that adjustment to the map. There are other more subtle things that people can comment on. But again, if, if it doesn't start looking right, we have ways that you can actually talk to our engineers and kind of talk through why, and then they can kind of help you formulate that comment or appeal to make sure the maps get, get where they need to be. So once we go through all of, all of that appeal period, we'll then work with community staff to resolve all the comments and appeals. And it takes us a bit of time to do a lot of the cleanup. But ultimately, we issue what we call our letter of final determination. And that's where we say, okay, we've, we've gotten all the comments and appeals, we've resolved them, we've talked through all this with the community staff. And now we're ready to issue our letter of final determination, which says that this is the best data that's out there. And the communities then have six more months to update their floodplain ordinances to reflect the newer information. And so again, that's where Deanna and Mitch will likely be contacting you maybe a little before that to kind of talk through your ordinances and kind of look through any, any adjustments that might need to be made to keep yourself in compliance with, with our maps. And the National Flood Insurance Program. So there's two ways that we are helping to or, yeah, that we're working with your communities to help reach out to your constituents. And so the first way that I'm going to talk about is a virtual flood map, flood map update site called the Story Map that and this is, so we use, we've always used to do public meetings and, and we're still going to do that. But during COVID, that became difficult. So we started doing this more virtually. And so we mimicked how we did the public meetings in a, in basically a online format. And so if you look closely at the bottom, you can see there's little things like flood map update. Am I at risk to flooding? Flood study in, in engineering? All those, if you click on each one of them, it, it's almost like going to that particular table. So the, the, the am I at risk to flooding is, is something where you can click on. There's contact information for how you can get a map of your own property. It also has the maps online if you just want to look, if you want to click on the map and you, you don't have to have GIS or anything else. You can kind of zoom around and, and look and see where the floodplains are and aren't on the map. The flood study and engineering is kind of talks through how all the study was done. And then it also provides contacts for the engineers to, so if you want to talk to them about how it was done, there is a, is an ability to email them. And then if, if, if you want to get into more details, we can actually even go online and have a conversation about it. Floodplain management is more that, okay, if, if I'm in this floodplain, you know, how does this change what I can do on my property? And then flood insurance is if, yeah, okay, these maps have changed. How is this going to change my flood insurance? How do I get the best rate and all those types of things? So, so that's what the, this flood map update site is designed to do virtually. And honestly, we've actually had more luck getting people to participate this way than we ever have with public meetings. Because as much as I find flood mapping very fascinating, people don't necessarily want to come right after work for, you know, at, at five o'clock to, to a public meeting sometimes. And so this has been a way to reach out to a lot of people and it doesn't make them have to come at a very particular time to a very particular place. So anyway, I just talked through some of the, the parts of the story map. So again, you can get your own personalized map of your property. You can talk to an engineer. You can talk to an insurance specialist. And you can, and talk to somebody about how it affects floodplain regulations. So the second part is, is we are going to do an open house. And so we are currently working with your staff to set up a time and a place for that. It'll probably be April, May-ish, right now is what it's looking like. And so at this open house, there'll be the, the right sheet kind of talks you through what's at the different tables. So there's that property identification table where you can get your maps. There's a flood insurance table. And so there'll be each of those, there'll be a presentation like I'm giving right here, kind of giving you overview of what the, how the open house is formatted and how you can go get your questions answered. And then there's also abilities to even fill out comment and appeal forms if, if that's what you're interested in. And so the, these are some of the leads of the people doing some of the at each of the tables at the, at the open house. And so those will be some of the people that we'll be bringing to to the open house to answer any questions. So as, as we get through all this flood mapping update, the next step afterwards is always that conversation of, okay, what can we do about it? So all right, you, you know what your risks are. But ultimately, we want to help your communities take action on that risk and maybe help mitigate that risk. So there is a lot of money, quite honestly, out there to mitigate the mitigation grants. And so as part of that, your community has hazard mitigation plan that basically looks at your hazards and some of the things you might do to mitigate those hazards. I think right now that, that plan is expiring in November of 2023. So they're a five-year plan. So you'll be updating those. I guess this year. And as part of that, that makes you eligible for a lot of different hazard mitigation grants. And so I think in, in your current plan, you know, one of the things it talks about is enhancing public outreach and educational programs for all hazards. So I mean, that's one of the things this public open house will also bring. It'll have people with expertise in, in the, the different hazards and helps them understand their exposure to the risk, both flood maps as well as other information. So that is just one thing, one step to go. But I think down the road, we'll talk probably just a little bit more about what critical facilities do you have potentially in the, in the floodplain? What could you do to mitigate some of those, some of that exposure? So, so again, what's coming next is we are planning the open house. Just, we, we're coming here today because we want you to be aware that this is what we're, we're doing and we're hoping to help your community staff. We're, we basically provide a lot of information on what other communities have done and what we've seen has been successful. And then your communities decide which is most appropriate for your own community on how you're going to do that. For the open house, we will have Spanish translation. So there, so even on the story map, there, there will be a, a Spanish speaking page to try and address that. And, and so that's just one of the things that have come from our conversations. But again, there's other things that we'll continue to talk to make sure we're able to address all your constituents' needs. So that, that's the, that's the spiel that I have. I'll open it to any questions you might have about what we're doing as the, for the update.
Thank you. Let's start online for sake of management. Want to start with your last.
Thank you, Ted and team. Thank you for being here and presenting this very important information that we need to get updated. My questions are really around, you know, walk me through what our constituents are going to experience at the open house, recognizing that we do have over 30% of our population that is Spanish-speaking. And I did have a chance to look at your website and toggle over from English and Spanish. I think that's really helpful. But that doesn't always work well with some of our constituents. In addition to what is that experience, what is the marketing going to look like for this open house that'll take place in April or May?
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna probably have to, well, I might chat. Olivia, I don't know if you can kind of talk through what we've done so far in terms of that outreach. I know Dustin has been working with you and, and I forget the outreach specialist's name.
Working with Dustin and Jackie a lot in the city. Yeah, so our goal, we're kind of figuring out a lot of these processes on our end too because some of that, having this span onsite Spanish translation is a little bit new to us. So we're really looking to the city to see what you all have done in the past and your in-person meetings. And it really is helpful to use local vendors too because they know your community well. So I've been working with Dustin and Jackie to get the names of some of the people who you have used in the past in-person events. And so we, on our end, will work with those vendors as well. So we haven't figured out all those details yet. We still have a little bit of time before the meeting. But in terms of outreach, all of the outreach will be in English and in Spanish. So we do have Spanish versions of all that material. And that is kind of up to the communities themselves. So we provide templates. And then the city can tailor those however they would like and really make them their own. And then they choose how to deliver those as well through mail or posting on websites or on social media. It looks very different for everyone.
Yeah, and I can speak to a little bit about it from the staff perspective. I was a floodplain administrator and current planner in Lane County Planning. And we did a coastal map update that covered 4,000 properties. So we went out kind of like on our own and used one of the, the templates to do a mailer to 4,000 folks to try to get them to attend and educate them about the public open house. I would say about 80 people showed up. So it really is kind of hit or miss how well attended these are. So, yeah, we did, we, we used the template. We mailed it out to the folks in the special flood hazard area. We used the address list that the mapping provider does. So we got GIS teams to help us get the address list and, and we contracted with the mailing company because it was 4,000 individuals.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Our internal teams have done a great job with outreaching our community members and ensuring that those that are most marginalized are there as well. I would say that the sooner you can get the word out, the better. And they know all the multiple channels such as radio and, and social media to ensure that there is attendance and having in-house interpreters is always a great idea. As, you know, I mentioned, over 30% of our population is Spanish-speaking and would definitely need some additional support. Thank you.
Anything else, guys? Mark?
Yeah, thanks you guys. With less than 50 properties impacted in, in the city of Hood River, have, have we already reached out to all 50 of them? Because it's a tiny little number. It seems like we could do this very effectively. So, not yet?
Not, not yet. I think that's still being pulled together. And Olivia, do you know, is it, is it going to be flyers or?
Yeah, so there was interest in doing targeted mailers. So, so letting individuals know if they've been mapped in or mapped out of this update or if there has been no change to their property. We haven't sent anything out yet because we don't have the date of the open house. And that first round of outreach materials is going to be targeted towards that open house. So as soon as we have a date and location for that, I think those, those mailers will start to go out.
How, how does the process impact non, non-in-the-flood-map people? I mean, I'm not in the flood map and I was, I, I would go as a city councillor, but as a homeowner, why would I go? Is it actually helpful for non-impacted properties?
So even if you're not in the floodplain, you can still get flood insurance. So if you're curious on what the flood insurance rate might, might be, that, that might be good information.
Like if I'm just very nervous, is that the?
Well, I mean, flooding can occur. So it covers things like a stormwater break or, or anything. You know, fluke. But, but you know, it also can be, you might just be interested in what your community's exposure is. If, so let's say we get a big hundred-year flood, where is that flood going to occur? Is that going to take out any critical facilities? You know, you might want to take a look at that just to see where those vulnerabilities are. So that's kind of the interest. Yeah.
Um, another question, you, you mentioned mitigation grants. I know we'll get to that through the process kind of thing. But can they be used to purchase easements to, you know, move development out of the, you know, along like Henderson Creek. It's a very narrow strip of land. And, and if we can just use tools like that to facilitate people to not build in it, but have an easement that, that might have community value besides just not having a bunch of houses full of water. So.
Yes, you can, there are grants to buy people out and, and move them out of the floodplain or floodway. Which, yeah. So they exist and they're actually one of the things that we, there's actually a couple of different venues that you can attack that issue from.
Okay, cool. That's all I had. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I have one more question around grants or just financial support rate. Inflation's pretty high right now. We're going to have individuals that may or may not be able to afford flood insurance. Is that something, or do you all have more information around that, that you could connect with constituents on how they could financially pay for some of this if they weren't able to afford flood insurance?
So I'm not the greatest flood insurance expert, but it, and again, we'll have our flood insurance specialists there. There, he, he would be able to speak better on what, what, what the opportunities are. Again, some of it's just kind of getting the best rate. And then, yeah, how do you, how do you deal with the affordability issue?
I just had a couple of questions for you. We have a limited number of affected properties based on the map if it's adopted. Let's say hypothetically, somebody comes along five years from now and discovers something new about that particular property. Would they be able to appeal it or change their property or do any of the mitigation efforts at that time? Or is, once these maps are accepted, they're locked in as is?
So we have two processes to change our maps at any time. So you don't have to be in one of these flood study updates to actually change the maps. So the simplest way is if, if you could actually, if you have survey of your property and you can show that the highest, or the lowest elevation of your ground is above the flood elevation that is shown on our maps, if you can show that, then you can get yourself, your individual structure removed. And so you can kind of remove that insurance requirement. The more complicated way is you can also access our, our models and engineering and then make, if you think that something was done wrong, you could tweak our models, make the adjustment. Then you have to go through what we call a letter of map revision process. So FEMA still has to review those changes. And, but if, if they're done in compliance with all of our rules, then we would change the map for that too.
And then related to that, if any of our constituents has any question in the future or wants clarification on any of these things, are, is one of you available to answer these questions? As opposed to they us who may not have all the answers for them?
Yes. And, and actually that, you know, one of the story map things is it has people that you can contact. That doesn't really go away. I mean, we may not hold the story map up for five or 10 years. But we hope all your community staff have our contact information so they can reach out to us and know how to get those questions answered. So we have a regional service center, which is We have a regional service center, which is just kind of downstairs from where I work, that that's that's kind of their whole job is is to help. Is people have questions and issues, they can, they can raise them and and talk them through. With people that that are knowledgeable about how to how to change things on the maps.
Um, thank you for coming. This is obviously a really critical update and. It seems like has a potential big impact on, you know, fifty properties. I guess I would love a little more clarity on like the city's role in this. It absolutely makes sense that you're reaching out for our assistance to to, you know, know our community partners and and do better outreach within our community, but then. I guess I'm wondering like if folks have comments or concerns or appeals, like are we are are we as the city expected to intervene or adjudicate, or do we? Do we just refer them to you?
So. Yeah, so what we want is, as your constituents have comments and appeals, we actually ask that they submit them through. Your community staff first, and it's mostly so they have awareness of the of the potential. Things that are being requested because because your community is a participant in the National Flood Insurance Program. You do have responsibilities to regulate to these floodplains and as you're regulating, we want you to be aware of. How these maps might potentially change, and so if you have in information that would. Help a comment or appeal or give us some. Other side of the story of the common appeal, then then we want you to say. To help provide us that information. Most of the time, communities don't and they just pass them on, and that's okay. Because some of it's very technical and we we will delve into that. It's our job to. Resolve and and get the maps to FEMA standards, but again, we're we're mostly looking to keep you. Your community aware of of what's going on, so there's no surprises when we do get to the final maps.
Okay. That might have confused me more. So, yeah, okay, so we you want to keep us informed, but like council isn't intervening or making policy decisions about this map?
No, I mean, again, because you guys are participants in the National Flood Insurance Program, you're. Your your planning group and all that ha- has to issue what we call flood floodplain development permit, so anybody. Who proposes to build in a floodplain in in one of these. Defined floodplains that we we map. Your community needs to make sure they're building safely, either they're. They're being outside of the floodplain or they're building above what that flood elevation is to keep themselves safe. And and so that's part of their. Part of the requirements on the permitting side. But the flood mapping side is is FEMA's responsibility to make sure they're done to the appropriate standard.
Yes, so Abigail and Dustin, it seems like what I'm hearing is. It's on us to update our screening process or record keeping or mapping, so that when somebody says. Hey, I'm going to build a new house, we say, no, no, we got this new map. I mean, is that, is that our, is that where we come in?
Yeah, that's really where we. Our key part is, we have certain. Regulations when it comes down to development, both on the ground. Development side as well as structural that are administered through our building department and through. So if we have land development that occurs within floodplain, there are. Points, checks and findings that we make regarding that. And then once again, once they put bricks and sticks in the ground, if this occurs in the acknowledged floodplain. We are there to obligated to check that and make sure that the building meets. Really structural codes.
And what about the house that's already there and unfortunately has just joined this elite club of I'm in the floodplain?
We will notify them soon. That changes are being made, we'll we'll direct mail everyone and provide them the opportunity to meet with FEMA. Why was it changed? Since the nineteen last nineteen eighty-four maps that were acknowledged and what does this mean to them? We'll have. Our DLCD folks or reps from FEMA region. That are really the subject matter experts on on the insurance. We are not insurance specialists and not a hydro engineer. However, that's where it'll be important to help and to mock the people with that level of expertise.
That was helpful. I I guess some of this selfishly is like, so if a constituent has a concern they brought to me, I should be passing it on to both FEMA and to Dustin, so Dustin's aware, but FEMA can address. Okay.
I would think you could pass it on to staff.
And they can they go from there. Okay, great, better. And then this question might be more for staff, I guess for everyone, but. I think it's great. We're doing direct mailers, really glad to hear their Spanish translation, definitely, I think, you know, both in English and Spanish, this is going to be some very technical language. And I'm wondering if there are ways that we can simplify it for folks, because it it is. A big lift to suddenly go, hey, surprise, there's a really complicated program you need to deal with. And also, and I'm glad there's the one open house, but you know, technology barriers are certainly not so a thing in our community, and so wondering, is is there a a phone number that people can call if they, you know, don't understand the story map and can't make the open house? What's what does that look like?
Yeah, so we we have contact information for all those different subjects. And I think on on the online version, I think is mostly emails, but. But we we also have provided. Your staff, Dustin and others, our phone numbers, so if if they. If it's an issue that needs to be addressed with an engineer, he can just. Go off that list, depending on whether it's an insurance question or a flood mapping type of question, he can call us and and we will address it.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. And thanks to all my fellow counselors for such good questions. I maybe only have two left. I'm just wondering in the grander scheme. Regarding the net change, I'm sure it's hard to hard to quantify, but is is this an acceptable amount of net change compared to other studies? Is it just kind of really depend on the the area surveyed? Can you just kind of put it into perspective for us?
Yeah, a lot of the changes, to be honest, are often. Based, I mean, some of it's, you know, we've had some bigger floods and sometimes that. Increases what our understanding of that one percent flood is, but. Usually a lot of the changes are actually having better topography, so in the old days when we were doing the mapping. We. We didn't have really, we are, the ground elevations were very coarse, and so water could go in places where it it doesn't actually go. And so, so what we're doing is we're now putting the water where it it really is going to go. And so that, depending on where structures are, that can. That can affect more structures, so. That's that's the likely reason for the changes. As we do these updates, so we're doing. We've already done all the outreach and and mostly through the process with Skamania County across the river. And Quikattack County, and then we're also doing Sherman County and Wasco County. And they're kind of almost on the same. Places you guys are right now, so and some of them are seeing increases. And and number of structures in the floodplain, some are seeing decreases. It's just a matter of the terrain and and how that that update. Changes where the where the structures are in or out of the floodplain.
Thank you. And then I suppose you 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 mentioned that, you know. Regarding appeals and and changes, sometimes that process is arduous and requires a lot of. You know, backing, but sometimes it can be a comment. Can you kind of just speak to that, you know, what what? What is something that's usually looked at and a comment is sufficient versus requiring a lot of information to back it up, et cetera, just so we get an idea about. When people are are anticipating an appeal. You know, what that appeal looks like.
Yeah, again, a lot of it's just. It is trying to identify. What doesn't look right and then and then it's diving into why doesn't it look right and and so that's why. We have our engineers available for conversations with people who don't think it looks right, because sometimes they're not going to necessarily know why. They just, it doesn't look quite right to them, and so. We've actually already been having a couple of these conversations and. One of the areas was just that we found that the. Drainage area, so the how much water can actually get to a particular point in the river? We we drew the line based on the topography, but it missed. A a high ground spot, and so it changed how much water could actually get to that spot, so we are going to have to make. An adjustment on that one stream. And and so that's, that's an example, but again, I think the more more common one I see is if somebody has. Survey information of their ground. And they're they're, they know they're, let's say they're another five or 10 feet higher, and this was more common in our older studies. Where we didn't have very good topography, when we have LIDAR, this happens less, a lot less often, but. But sometimes that LIDAR misses because there's. There's too much space in between the points, and when you have a survey of the ground, you can actually show that that ground is all. All above that flood elevation, and so we'd make an adjustment to the map showing that that air that higher ground area would be out. Again, we don't see a lot of that, but it it can happen. In certain spots.
I think another example of just a comment also could be. A staff identifying the wrong name on a map for road or boundary location of a county or city. And that could be like primarily due to annexations or UGB expansions, so. Those things are something to take a look at too, at the local staff level. When you're going over these maps with folks, if you see those types of things that could be done through a comment versus an appeal. And we can work with GIS folks or the mapping team with FEMA to get that resolved. That would be a comment.
Yeah, those are the easiest to resolve.
Thanks for bringing the context. Appreciate it.
I thought you were going to say. If somebody has like a steep backyard and the bottom corner by the curb is in the floodplain, but the house is. Twenty feet above that, which in our city could happen. Do they care?
Only if they're planning on building on that very little part that's in the floodplain, so i- if if your structure is. Outside of the floodplain, then there is no insurance requirement and there isn't any. Regulations associated with where you're building.
Okay, thanks for this hard work. It's one of those things where it's out of sight, out of mind till it isn't, and you hear that every day, I'm sure. Anything else on this topic, y'all? And we'll staff will let us know when the open house is scheduled and whatnot. Thanks.
Alright, thank you.
Moving on to open the work session, now I'm going to make a radical suggestion here, so bear with me. This council procedures discussion will be long. We could put that at the end and do our council meeting first. Shall we try?
Sounds good.
All right, in that case, we're going to. I guess temporarily adjourn the work session and move into the regular council meeting. Do we have any agenda additions or corrections, Abigail?
No, we do not.
No, we do not. All right, we have a consent agenda. I know that there was a slight correction in the minutes that Megan pointed out, so talk about that, would you, Megan?
Yes, I'm sure with page sixty-nine of the packet under mayor call. Counselor Saunders agreed to represent city council on DLCD. I agreed to submit an application. But there's no guarantee I will actually get to represent the council, so just a quick edit there.
Thank you for your willingness nonetheless. So I think that's a very minor. Scrupulous change, and so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And I would move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Second by subpoena, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fair vote, I motion passed. Westside Urban Renewal.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy to be here. At your last meeting at the February thirteenth Urban Renewal Agency Meeting, you heard from the consultant Elaine Howard had a presentation. With the initial findings of a feasibility study. That was the first phase that we did that we agreed to as part of our contract with her. You might remember the feasibility is an optional piece, it was not required by. By state ORS, but we decided to do that just to ensure. That the back of the envelope. Figures really penciled out before we went any further on a west side urban renewal district. So two weeks ago, you heard from Elaine, had a chance to answer questions, and then today you have the official memo on the feasibility piece. Our suggested action for you tonight is that you accept the feasibility report if you're comfortable with. The findings or or give us more questions. Dustin and I are available to. Respond to comments or answer questions. We can take things back to Elaine and team if we need to do further research. But if you're comfortable with what you have now, then we would be looking for. A suggested motion to accept the feasibility study and direct staff to work on the next piece. So we've had the rough draft. And now, if you're ready, we can actually start the real work of writing a plan and report. In the next couple of months, as we work on that, there'll be a couple of things that we would need to bring to you, probably either bring you some options or some recommendations for you to respond to. Those topics would include how many acres the district should be. What the maximum indebtedness level should be, and then what projects you would like to see included, so. We've made some assumptions in the feasibility plan on all three of those topics. But we'd be looking to really fine tune that and get your direction on those pieces. The goal, you might recall, the timeline is ambitious. I remember when we talked about this a couple of months ago. Counselor Dan Miller saying fast track this, so we have fast tracked the feasibility study, now it's time to dive in in more in-depth. So our goal would be to bring a final plan and report to both you and to the county board of commissioners for a final approval. Before October first, so lots of discussions in a short time. As you see from the memo, Elaine and I are presenting to most of the taxing districts. In this feasibility piece, and then we will also have an opportunity for them to comment. Before the plan is presented to you again, so two touches for most taxing districts if they choose to take that. With that, Dustin and I are available for comments and questions and then looking for an action from you if appropriate.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's start online, Mark.
Thanks. My my only questions are whether. And I think you, Abigail, you said that we still can fiddle with the number of acres and fiddle with the lists of projects, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, so then then I'm good.
Okay.
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
None for me.
Um, my only question is, as you're going around to the other taxing districts, is there any value in having counselors join you, or is it really a staff level thing?
That would be great. I mean, if, you know, I and Elaine will be talking about the mechanics of the district. But if you are interested in speaking more to the policy and the vision of that, I'd love to have any of you with. So I can, I think in the memo has the list of the dates we have so far. If any of you wanted to join us, I'd be happy to have you there with us.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I can coordinate that.
And so I guess a suggestion to counsel, maybe we should. Assign people around.
Yeah, so let's see how would we want to handle that, we could do that.
I can coordinate that through email if that would be easiest. I'll just make sure I don't have a majority of you at any one meeting. You'll have to take turns.
No, nothing else, thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
I don't have any questions on the feasibility study itself now.
Thank you, counselor.
So this is the the step we're at now, we were on the radio this morning with Mark Bailey and. Talked a little bit about it and. I brought up the waterfront. Urban renewal district and, you know, when. When I was running bike races down there and there was humpbites on the home straight in front of frame, like. It was a different world and boy, that took off, and it's really, really, really hard to predict exactly how it's going to go. Out there, what's going to go the quickest and what houses? Out there, what's gonna go the quickest and what houses are gonna sell the quickest and what the sort of commercial zones are gonna, but. It seems likely that this will be uh an aid in developing our city in the way we want. So it seems to me like. Moving ahead, so I, it sounds to me like we're in violent agreement that we wanna wanna move ahead, so I would entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the Westside Urban Renewal Area Feasibility Study and direct staff to prepare a Westside Urban Renewal Area. Planning report for city council consideration in accordance with O R S, chapter four, five, seven, and all other applicable requirements.
Who by Saunders?
I second.
Second by Rivera. Any further discussion? All in favor? Fair vote, time motion passed, proceed.
Thank you, council.
Okay, now we have a couple of ordinances to read. Jen?
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to entertain a motion for the second final reading of ordinance twenty seventy three by title only.
Second.
Uh, councillor Sapina? Councillor Saunders?
Yes.
Councillor Paulson?
Yes.
Councillor Rivera?
Aye.
Councillor Zan Miller?
Yes.
Your Honor. Ordinance twenty seventy three and ordinance amending Title Five Business Taxes License and Regulations. Chapter five point zero seven transient merchant and special events. Section five point zero seven point zero three zero definitions. And five point zero seven point zero five zero licenses. License applications, standards and limitations of the Head River Municipal Code to allow food cart vendors.
Ordinance twenty seventy three will pass the second reading and will become lodged in thirty days. Uh, next.
Your Honor, I'd like to entertain a motion for the first reading of ordinance twenty seventy four by title only. Councillor Saunders?
Yes.
Councillor Paulson?
Yes.
Councillor Rivera?
Aye.
Councillor Sapina?
Aye.
Councillor Zan Miller?
Yes.
Your Honor.
Aye.
Nordens proclaiming annexation of approximately five points one eight acres of contiguous territory. Located with within the city's urban growth boundary and withdrawing the same from the service territories of. Westside Rural Fire Protection District and from the Ice Fountain Water District, I B C twenty second and Belmont.
Ordinance twenty seventy four is passed at first reading. We'll have a second reading in two weeks.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, now. Go back to the council procedures. Is that where we are? I think we are. Look at this flip flop. How exciting. Um, this is so important. Again, we were on the radio this morning and sort of. Mark's like, so what's on the agenda? And we're like, well, you know, proceed, seems like the unsexiest thing ever, but honestly, it's like how we knew our work. This is so important and so detailed and here we go.
Well, thank you. I've been so excited about this. Uh, and all credit goes to um councillor Zan Miller, who I think has been talking about this for quite some time. So. This is a big day that we finally get here. Um, you have in your packet uh red lined comments. These are. Simply a place to start. These are my own thoughts, give you something to react to. Um, I have made myself a nice little chart where I can take all your comments tonight, uh, take them back, polish them up. Uh, confer with the city attorney um and then bring you something that hopefully is close to a finished product sometime in the next couple of weeks or months. Um, our city attorney, Dan Kearns, is with us. He has reviewed this document, but he and I have not um. Not conferred and he did not contribute to the um version you have. So. Um, we'll definitely have some questions for Dan as we go along. We might have some back and forth about best ways. Um, in an attempt to organize us, I've created the most boring PowerPoint. Um, so let me get that up there. Just one second here.
So I borrowed the uh intervention boring PowerPoint.
Challenge accepted. Alright, here we go. So I've just got each each slide as one or two sections kind of run through and then I'm just looking for. Uh, comments you might have. Um, and Dan uh as well, please chime in as we go along. Um, the section one, which is the authority, I guess I would also say. Lots of formatting changes here. I'm not looking, you know, there's a lot of cleanup. There's times where I could not. Not uncross what I had crossed out. So you'll see some issues around there. Um, and two general um cleanups that need to happen throughout. The first is at times the rules refer to citizen. They think generally we try to say individuals or residents. Um, some of those I caught, some of them I didn't. And then um, the other is, I think councillor Zan Miller had the suggestion. Of presiding officer be just a good generic thing to have through unless we specifically mean the mayor. So generic term except for, you know, maybe one or two times when we're talking about the mayor. So those are cleanups that that I can address. We are. Any comments, thoughts on on section one, which is only uh what, two or three sentences long? Uh, or the introduction ahead of it? Alright, then section two, uh, presiding officer policymaking filling vacancies. They would say I would receive, I did receive some comments from a couple of you ahead of time. And so I've been, I've got those notes. Um, some of them, they're small. We probably don't need to bring them up, but I will note councillor Zan Miller here at filling vacancies asked. If we wanted to include something to address the length of the term that someone would be filling, is that the remainder of the term? Is that until the um? Till the next election, holding a special election? Councillor, would you like to say more on that?
Well, I I just felt that it it wasn't addressing that. And you know, maybe that's in state law or something. Um, you know, if if we appoint someone. You know, is it for three and a half years or is it just for six months until the next November? I I just, I didn't know the answer. So um, I thought this. Might be a document that would answer that question.
I think our practice that I've observed has been if. Grand boots to Mexico, we appoint someone for the remainder of his term. That's what's happened. I've seen that happen.
So generally, we can codify that.
Anybody opposed to this?
Seeing nods.
Yeah, I think it just say what we do, you know.
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
That was okay. Great. Anything else for this section two? Look at us cruising right along. It's gonna get big. Alright, section three, uh, here's a piece where I took some um. Pieces, there's a whole section on media, which I guess I should also say, I started by reviewing the um. Council Rules of Procedure from four or five different cities model code and. Uh, many of them did not address media, so say you could delete this altogether. Or I chose to take some of that media and just put it here in the open um meeting section. So that's what you've got right here. I also included it. How do people request accommodation was another sentence I saw in several others. Um, but any comments on that first one here for um. Open meetings, and this is a question for Dan, is uh can council determine who or what constitutes the media?
Ultimately, they have to. Um, and as you know, this is. Th- this is a changing. Uh, issue as the definition of what is risen a uh media representative. Changes over time. Um, I've seen some pitched battles in some cities over kind of local blogger types. Uh, whether they're media representatives or not, where it matters most is who can attend executive sessions. Um, and so um. Ultimately, you have to define what is. Uh, uh. A media outlet for purposes of who is a representative of the media. And you know, if when I've seen it, the rubber hit the road, it's when um basically local bloggers have been pitched out of. Executive sessions and they then object to the local D A that there's been a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So that that's never come to that point in the city, but that's where it matters. And I think you have the authority. Uh, to identify who is and who isn't in the category.
As a suggestion, I can remember reading the script before executive session where it says the media may attend but can't. Report on or something like that.
Right.
Rather than like quibble about YouTube versus Snapchat, like I would suggest. Let's leave that script as it is for now. It hasn't ever been a problem and burn that bridge when we come to it.
Great.
That works.
Yep. And then I also wondered, um, you know, the last time it should review in twenty eleven, we have technology that we didn't have. Previously, do we need to say anything about that in this piece about, you know, that we will provide um live video of our meetings or? You know, I I would say the safest thing is to leave it silent. We don't know what that might look like. Sorry, councillor.
Oh, well, I, so my understanding is that was a state law that was passed to me, you know, last year that we now have to have the simultaneous hybrid. Do we just reference that O R S versus something or?
Yeah. That's a great question. It was an emergency order. And then I don't remember if it was codified into state law.
It 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 was, and it basically requires if there's gonna be public input, you have to provide. A in-person option. So uh, state law tends to now favor uh the virtual hybrid. Platform versus strictly in-person. Um, and that's different in Washington State. Oregon's gone more. Virtual and um hybrid.
So it sounds like we could just cite the O R S. We're not, we're not, we don't decide about that.
But comply with state law.
Yeah, sounds good. So maybe we need.
We can just write that for the whole procedure.
We will not break state law. I think that's a good goal for us.
In a lot of these, it's always hazardous to try and um restate. Uh, the current state law in your rules because state law changes and. To the extent there's any discretion involved in state law at all, you don't want to create additional obligations on you that you. Can trip you up and that you can violate down the road and give people an opportunity to, you know, maybe get. Some kind of remedy for your innocuous violations of your own rules. So don't be so specific is my advice.
Thank you, Dan. Alright, then we get into the types of meetings. Any thoughts or comments on the definitions here? You see that I had. Removed work sessions and that this be one where we can talk about if you want to keep work sessions as a separate meeting. I was suggesting. That they be a component of a regular meeting, um, but you may choose to have a reason why you want to keep those as a separate meeting.
Great. Yeah, a question about uh special emergency meetings. It is written in here that uh it would be. Uh, twenty four and under emergency specifically, it'd be uh by consent of all available councillors. Um, what if only one or two councillors could show up? Would we still require a quorum? Would that even still be a custom meeting?
So good question. And Dan, I know emergency meetings sometimes can have a. Suspension of some of those pieces. I don't know how much we need to articulate in that.
Um, it depends if there's going to be official action. Um, you know, there's the quorum requirement for calling the meeting. Um, and I think that you can uh reduce that under emergency circumstances. But the other question is, well, if you only have two people present, do you want uh official action of that sort to be allowed? To be made in an emergency meeting with just a a small number of councillors. So the quorum to call it, I I think is an easier question to address.
Yeah, and it and the current language does not. Uh, actually have the mechanics of how you the meeting would be called, which is why I suggested the language of the available councillors.
Uh, I kind of don't like the word consent because it sounds like a decision to me that there's some kind of official action. And of course, you can't take action unless you've got a quorum. And so it kind of. Um, is sort of the camel's nose in the tent here. So I, that's word I have a problem with.
Hey, Paul. I I think isn't the, how many votes is the decision that's in the charter, right? That's so that we're not. Okay, alright, that's right then.
We just reviewed that. Uh, councillor Saunders and I. Yeah, I think the other piece I have seen in other places is if you have an emergency meeting. You might make a decision, but then you make sure to ratify that in your next regular meeting, you know, like. There's been a. We need, you know, there's been a flood. We need to authorize, you know, the city manager to, you know, spend dollars, you know, you know. Higher than the normal limit and we will ratify that in our next meeting.
So Dan, consent, you know, like.
Um, I would say uh advanced notice uh to all available councillors, something like that.
What is, I mean. Is available important there?
Um, I think so because if they're. You know, if they're not available, then that kind of gets you off the hook. And this is where.
You would do advance notice to all councillors and whoever's available shows up, right?
Yeah. Yeah, you could say to all councillors, um, but it may not connect. You know that.
Great. Well, I think Dan and I can wordsmith that a little bit, but I think I've got the the intent there. Thank you, Dan.
I have one quick question. Um. You know, so normally, yes, our work session is just before our regular meetings, but like if we were ever to say, oh, we're gonna do an extra. We're meeting at five on Thursday to really dive into two hours of. Some topic. Does that just become a special meeting? Do we need to have work session be an actual thing that can happen? Like what? Does it matter?
I don't know that it matters. I think it'd just be a special meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, or a workshop. I mean, you have this other kind of squishy category of workshop or training meeting.
The the way I view these things is that you've got your regular meetings set in the code. Those are the the uh. Second and fourth Mondays. Any other meeting is a special meeting. And I always view workshop as just a component of the agenda. So if you have a special meeting, that's just gonna be a workshop type setting, then it's a special meeting. The agenda consists of this workshop item. That that's kind of how I see it.
And what about work session, Dave?
If I remember correctly, Dan is a, is actually a fan of the separate work session. I think you told me that when I first started.
Right, as a component, a regular component of every agenda, have a a work session on that, yes.
But do you think it needs to be a separate, you know, open the work session, hold that uh those items and then adjourn and then start the regular meeting?
Um, it's good to segregate them that way. One problem I see come up is if you're a little too prescriptive about. Um, in regular, out of regular, in workshop, out of workshop, is sometimes if you set the workshop. Or the regular meeting for a time certain, then you've got a gap and you can't start the next segment of your agenda. Until the time you get to that time. So I kind of like that, you know, the the. The regular meeting starts at six o'clock. It consists of uh a number of things preliminary, then a workshop session. And then the regular session. And so those components of the agenda, you can just roll through each one of them. As you get to it, finish up early. That's great. You can move into the next one and not ha- not have it set up as a. A regular meeting agenda and a separate work session agenda. What do you do? What I like?
I didn't really understand that because what, the only funny thing about what we do now, my ear, is we say at six o'clock, thanks for coming, boom. Work session, and then I do this funny thing and say, okay, now at six forty five, we adjourn the work session and open the regular council. Like, why do I have to do that?
Yeah.
The whole thing is the council meeting.
I find it.
But I learned that's what I do, so that's what I do.
Right. It goes in, there's the work session and there's the general session, I guess.
Yeah, I I think my own experience in looking at a couple of other places, either they have work sessions that were like. And once a month, we have an in-depth work session for two hours kind of separate from our meeting or, you know, it's held an hour early or something. Or the work session is a component of a regular meeting. We've kind of have a hybrid version in which we kind of have it. But then it, we don't, it doesn't have a time certain. We don't really know when the regular, because a member of the public who wants to go to the regular meeting. I don't know when the regular meeting starts. As well, I think work sessions are.
And for example, today.
This is.
We had a work session in which we had a very important. And very long.
But.
Very specific topic.
Very tedious.
Nobody. Except the.
Look at our audience.
And a dedicated few. Okay, and I mean, so in terms of, oh, I'll just breeze into city council and get to do my thing right away. I. That still doesn't happen in in any s- in any structure necessarily. So. Um, I don't feel that strongly about foot flopping it. Um, but Ab- Abigail certainly has advocated that we should. Council meeting first, make the dec- the decisions and then work session after that. I can. I could go either way. If you guys have a preference or have you given that some thought?
I just think if we invite.
Is there a way we can leave it to? You know, ma- mayor and city manager discretion to to format a meeting to just hopefully make the most sense for the public attending. Um, I mean, because maybe we have a discussion item that's super interesting to more than Linda. Um.
Right, we have consultants that we're paying a lot of money per hour to sit and we'd want them to be first, so we can stop paying them and let them get on the bit.
Kind of flexible, depending on cost effectiveness and level of public interest. And we might, like tonight, we flip flopped it, God forbid, you know, and that kind of worked out.
When I've been on council or chairs of other, or it's uh, the chairman's chair has always been able to set the agenda and schedule as. As appropriate.
I have that idea. Let's try that some. I don't know how we. I have that idea. Let's try that some. I don't know how we or if we do even codify that in the procedures like it it does say that we set the agenda and whatnot.
Great. Yeah, I think the so for me, the piece I get hung up on is that it's a separate session. Right? So like tonight, I guess we should have adjourned the regular meeting in order to hold the work session and then adjourn the work session.
And I kind of
The mechanics of that feels It's the separateness of it that I think trips me up.
Is the only thing that would ever be in a work session, discussion items?
Yes. Yeah, I think that by definition, a work session would be something that is discussed. However, I would say you could on occasion, I think I wrote for like necessity or convenience, have a decision come from a work session. It would never want to say that, gosh, we're never ever going to have a decision, but generally, we're starting from a study or education or conversation.
I mean, just like because I our current agenda is like open work session, agenda additions or corrections, discussion item adjourned. And it's like if it's just discussion items is the actual means, like, can we not just put that somewhere else?
Is is there a legal requirement for these meeting section semantics?
Nope, you can call them what you wish.
Well, I yeah, Dan, I guess if you if we can do whatever we want.
Right, I'm 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 disinclined to make this overly prescriptive because then it ties your hands and particularly the mayor's hands, who's the presider of the meeting. Um it gets a little too clunky. And the way it's worked this evening, for example, I thought was fine because you know, the agenda had all these different things listed. There was the the workshop session part of the agenda, then the regular session part, and there were no, the only time certain. So if you wanted to show up for the for the meeting, you show up at six o'clock. That's when the meeting starts and it consists of a number of things. Your workshop is usually a an opportunity to discuss action items that will appear later on in the kind of general component of the agenda. Um so it it sometimes would defeat the purpose if you held the workshop session at the end of the meeting, but sometimes that's fine, like this part of it, because this isn't going to be set for action tonight. It's it allows you to take your time and discuss it at towards the end of the agenda. Um so I don't want to be too prescriptive because it gets tricky and I don't want to interfere with the presider with their ability to kind of manage this and get done all the business that needs to be done and allow people to participate.
And I can think of examples where it would be overall better for all involved, have a work session second. And I can think of instances where it's quite convenient. You have a work session, we talk about it, we say, great, let's put all that on the agenda for twenty minutes from now.
Mm hmm.
And we'll pass like that sometimes works out great. So I think the I'm I'm hearing an idea of sort of increased flexibility and maybe changing the appearance of the agenda. It's not going to say work session.
Mm hmm.
An agenda item for the city council meeting would be a discussion item. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, and that's
Oh, good. Sorry, go ahead, Mark.
Abigail's draft has discussion items in the you know, in in what paragraph?
We get to section four.
And I I agree with I agree with that.
Okay, thanks.
Great. I do feel like this is like the thorniest one. So this is so great. I think thank you for this conversation.
From page thirty-one.
Right. And so uh any other things? Uh workshops and training meetings, question for Dan, can they meet out of town? The rules say yes, but I want to make sure that was still legal. Because I'm excited to take uh council to really fun and exotic places.
Hawaii, yeah.
As I recall, it uh can't unless it I it can't meet outside of the jurisdiction uh for the normal regular meeting because it tends to deny people's ability to participate. Uh let me check to see if there are any changes recently because of our new virtual hybrid world.
Thanks, Dan.
It used to, used to be you couldn't do it.
Great. Thank you.
It seems like a general not a super good idea to disenfranchise all the residents.
Yeah, the tricky part would be like, oh, gosh, we're gonna have a um meeting at the middle school. The middle school's out of town, you know, it's just barely out of town.
Oh, it's
So it's not, it's not, we're just always going up to Vancouver, B C. I'm sorry to say.
Yes.
So so
I was voting Saruda, but
Saruda Council?
Woo.
Okay.
So Dan, uh I ask you to do a little bit more research on that.
Yep.
Um and we can, we can fine tune that one. Uh then executive sessions. Um here's a piece where I, as Dan said, it's always good when you um you know, don't try to redefine state law. So I generally tried to remove the reasons because uh if state law changes, I don't want us to be out of date with that. But uh happy to see if any comments you might have on this piece of it.
A comment I would have is that when I'm handed that script, when we have an executive session
Mm hmm.
and I dutifully read through it, it doesn't always like super make like regular English sense.
Mm hmm.
So it seems like there was like some cut paste, like you now have this fourth width for the of ORS. What am I saying?
Yeah.
So plain English executive session script.
Great.
Yeah, it has to be part of the script. Um it's just we don't need to put it in, the list them all in the council procedures. We'll rely on state law for that. The script, though, when we go into exec session, you've got to explain the reason and cite the statute.
Right.
I don't, I'm not objectively citing statute. I just want to make sure it makes sense what I'm citing. Like, tonight's executive session is held because of ORS nineteen eleven or whatever it is. It's it just seems too boilerplate and cut and paste.
City recorder and I can talk
Yeah.
You know, maybe we can get you a early draft of some of those and you can give us feedback. Great. Um, yes, please.
Sorry on that because I feel like we've twice now been like, oh, it's important that you read that script and we got rid of that. You need to read it in the procedure. Um, I don't know if it needs to be in procedures or if we can just do it, but like
Page thirty-two at the bottom.
Yeah, I'm flag- flagging that as like, well, we just said we should really make sure we do that.
If it's under ORS, we would have to, wouldn't we?
I'm I'm this is where I don't know the ORS. So, yeah, um.
I believe we were just told that we had to read that.
Yeah.
Yeah, my
Yeah, although it might be good practice to include regardless of what the state law says, right? Like the state law, remove that and still want to do it.
You you have to cite the statute uh pursuant to which the exec session is called, which is me usually Jen words these in pretty perfunctory ways that make sense to, you know, consult with legal counsel, consult with uh people authorized to negotiate real estate transactions or contracts, those sorts of things. And don't be more specific than that.
And does the ORS also get into the, you know, the mayor needs to say the session is confidential and may not be reported, but if they don't say that, the proceedings can be reported?
No, um he doesn't have to say that, but I think he does because it's a good thing to remind people to zip it when it comes to um reporting on what you hear in exec session. So no one can claim I didn't know.
But I would counter that if the if the presiding officer does not say those magic words, it does not give permission to report.
Okay, so that's not
Right.
That's a touch too weird.
Yeah.
Okay.
That feels like a real like you know, if the cashier didn't hand you your receipt, you get, you know, your meal for free. It's very weird.
Okay. Um and then this maybe is a a big overarching question I have for maybe for the rest of the council of like if if the point of these procedures is um really, really to state various ORSs that we need to follow versus like, is it also somewhat to train new and existing counselors on what we should be doing? Um because there's we we erased the like counselors and staff should not discuss executive session matters outside of executive session. Um then that just seems like something important to reiterate if this is about training folks on what their duties are. And so I I guess if that's part of the point of this, I feel like we should put that back in.
Yeah, I I've always thought it was useful. It also informs the public kind of what's the nature, what's going on? Why am I being booted out of the meeting? And I'll just, you know, talk to Megan after the meeting, find out what went on. And this announces, no, 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 you can't do that.
Yeah, so the third paragraph from the bottom of page thirty-two that begins, counselors and staff should not discuss.
Yeah.
Let's put that back in.
Okay. Great. All right, anything else on executive sessions? Otherwise, we're on the last one of the slide, uh attendance. Um which this is such an interesting one to me because it talks about the mechanics of how you will inform us that you're going to be absent, which I think is a odd and very uh specific thing, but it doesn't actually talk about attendance expectations of council members. So I uh put in um some language from another, from a couple other cities here uh to say, you know, what happens if somebody no longer shows up to their meetings for your consideration? You can remain silent on this issue or you might want to have something different here, but
Absence from all within your city areas are two months. So if you miss four in a row, you're staying there as a pro.
That's uh that is what another city says, whether that's uh
Good God, four in a row, that's eight.
That and I would say that's probably, you could also say unexcused absences, right? You know someone's story and you're like, okay, you're gonna miss two months.
And not that this should have gone differently, but when my family did this battle to Ecuador for six months,
Mm hmm.
I stepped in. Six months was too long. But I could have said all be back in six
Mm hmm.
But I didn't.
Right, and and the rest of council would not have had a mechanism to hold you accountable under the current procedures.
Yeah, um I I think it's reasonable to have some attendance expectations. Is this, this is legal for us? We have the power to declare a position vacant like under charter?
Dan is not in, but I want him to
Yeah, it's an attendance requirement because it's the it comes from uh the requirement that you've got this job to do. And the you you set up really what are the requirements for the job? And if you don't meet those standards, then you can be removed because you're not performing the job. And it really, I've seen it only come
Even even though it's a an elected like
Right.
Okay. Right, it can feel weird to say, okay, like, forget who you voted for.
Right, the thing I've Right, I've never seen it happen where a city council actually ejected someone. Um what it does, it provides you an oper- or provides the mayor an opportunity to go to that counselor and say, hey, come on. You know, there's this requirement in the procedures that says you gotta be around for a certain number of meetings and look, either you gotta do that or you gotta jump off the cliff and quit. Um and that's how it turns out. We right now, we have in one of my other cities, we've got a a counselor who's got like major medical problems and is kind of in denial about his ability to actually
That's true.
perform the job. And there's a pretty hefty uh series of meetings coming up. And so it gives the mayor a chance to go to that person and say, look, this is going to get tougher and tougher, not easier and easier. And why don't you just step down? And you can be reappointed later if there's an open position or you can run for office. But you know, this is going to take more time and energy than you have it. And I've never, they're not going to boot him off. But they uh there's going to be a lot of pressure applied to this guy to do what needs to be done.
Great. Uh the requirement in here that a counselor show up once every two months is still a pretty easy bar to fall over.
In person or electronically?
Yeah. So we don't even have to physically show up here. We can sign in on Zoom on our phone if we really want to and show up. And we also just show up and then log off and go up and do other things. But we have been there for the start of it. Uh that's that's a very minimal requirement. I would actually be in favor increasing that requirement as we all chose to run for these positions and make these requirements to our community to actually show up and do these jobs. That's where I'm at.
I I can't help but feel that I've read the sixty days somewhere else. Am I making that
Somewhere else in these rules or?
No, not not in in something else. Uh I know it was the League of Oregon Cities.
It might, it might be
But I was surprised
Have you been reading other cities?
Yeah, um so today, today, there are no reports.
Correct.
Megan quit, quit coming and doesn't even address this. Is that?
That's right.
I'm surprised by that also. Okay, so is there a taste for tighter than sixty? The grant grant's idea more restrictive than sixty or is sixty okay?
Was sixty kind of the standard you saw in other cities?
I totally stole the sentence from two other cities.
I mean, I agree it's super loose, but if it's just the like, okay, you like, we expect you to do your job.
Well, that's where I'm going to with the sixty is is there's something tied to that sixty number?
Yeah.
Uh regarding law or something.
The one thing I could say is, you know, if I think about November, you might only have one meeting. December, you might only have one meeting. So you could you know, miss two meetings and you're within sixty days.
I think Dan's argument is good, but it gives me
It's a tool.
Is a tool to say, hey, that's awesome.
Yeah, and hopefully our city councilor show up more than six meetings a year.
Yeah.
I can, we haven't had that problem yet, but
Right. Okay, great. Well, and I think you know, if the rules have not needed to be addressed for more than ten years because council has been so functional, but we write rules not for the the good days, but for the bad days. So uh all right, well, thank you. We've made it through section three. Now we get to section four. Okay, thank you all. Be ready.
Seems very reasonable.
Did he say five minute break? Is that what I heard?
Five, yeah. Five minute break.
Great, and we're back.
Yeah, all right, section four.
Section four, which is a little bit of a continuation of the conversation we had in section three about the um work session and the order. Uh so two pieces here, agenda content, I'm going to talk about in depth uh and agenda preparation. So looking at the agenda, um I've kind of tried to write out like, Ken, here's how I think our meetings currently work, right? Public hearing is kind of its own, then work session's kind of its own, regular meeting kind of its own. So that's the current piece. Um what I am suggesting uh for comments and reaction is uh to take those pieces, put them into one meeting. Um so then we don't have a, you know, a call to order and an adjournment. It's also weird to me that in the um in the work session is where we have flag salute, which I've changed to pledge of allegiance. I think that's um and um and then we have agenda corrections or additions in the Um, and um, and then we have agenda corrections or additions in the work session, and then we have that again in the regular session, so. Just trying to combine some pieces here. Um.
Okay, so this is this again.
Right, so these are, these are all the elements, not wedded to the order of the elements, but. Just having them there. So the blue ones are the ones that come from the work session, the green come from your regular meeting. The yellow is the um. Is public hearing and the new uh, the the ones in black are new or restored, so land acknowledgement is not. Um officially part of your agenda, but I'm pleased that you do it each time. Presentation and proclamations kind of, they float all over your meetings, so I'm setting that in an assigned place. I mean, that basically upfront thinking those are gonna be residents who are visiting. Uh, maybe bring their children. We want to get them in and out as fast as possible. And then the other new items, um, report of committees is actually in your council procedures, but you haven't been following that, so adding that back. Uh, and then selfishly, I put a space for me. Uh, and then for staff, so if you know, if we'd had a big fire in town, I would say, and Chief Damian has a, can give us a quick report, so just have a space where staff can um, provide you with information.
Excellent.
Comments or thoughts? Yeah.
Um, I love, love all the additions, quick things on order, um. I, this is very much out of the discretion of the mayor, but we genuinely has been doing the land acknowledgement before the pledge.
Hmm.
Um.
That feels like the right one.
Okay, thank you for getting that.
And then um, presentations and proclamation, I guess, again, discretion of the mayor, like if it's the short stuff, great, but like the FEMA presentation was forty-five minutes.
For sure.
Maybe shouldn't be in front of business.
Almost feels like a work session, doesn't it?
Uh, and so I'm just what, you know, like. I don't, I feel like business from the audience kind of first thing, because those, we don't usually have more than two or three people speaking at that.
Can you imagine if those poor children had come and learned about?
Um, and I, and again, I know we had, we just had a whole conversation about like, hey, I'm open to us burying this, you know, agenda by agenda. Um, but those were my first thoughts of like. What's easiest for the public, um.
Great. Thank you, and I I really appreciate that lens of like, what's easy, you know, you are stuck here for the whole meeting regardless of what order things are in. Uh, but what's, what's easiest and most interest, what will the public be most interested in are the things I want to front load on the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, the one suggestion to expand on that would be that the chair would have the ability to adjust the schedule as best fits the particular meeting. So if we, if we have a presentation later, a particular presentation later on.
That is a sentence here. It says the mayor and I would change that presiding officer may consider agenda items out of order as necessary to facilitate the efficient management of the meeting.
Exactly, so this list, we wouldn't necessarily have follow it point by point.
Exactly right.
The chair, the chair moves up around as, as need be.
Yep.
Something that was different in the before times was that the business from the audience language on the agenda. Made a distinction and said, anyone who would like to address item not on tonight's agenda.
Mm hmm.
And I'm not sure that, I mean, that maybe there's plus minus to that, like, I get it, if you wanna speak to it when we're discussing it. I understand that.
Yeah.
But if you have to wait ninety minutes. And you just as rather give your two cents and go home, I understand that also, so we we no longer have that language and I don't think that was incidental or that was intentional. Does, do you guys remember?
Don't.
I, I think that was to keep everybody from bouncing around topic to topic. Once we got one thing, we can actually focus on that one thing, dive into it more deeply as opposed to bouncing around.
Yeah.
Dustin, where?
Also, you uh, we'll get to quasi judicial. Also, when there are hearings, we ask that.
That's separate.
Participants don't speak ahead of time that they speak when called upon, testify when called upon, so they're in the record.
Okay, so this is from the audience, should not include quasi judicial testimony.
Yep.
Thank you, good point.
And. Go ahead, anyone?
Oh, I mean, I don't remember an intentional discussion, but I think it's. I I my recollection is that you always kind of offered of, do you wanna speak now or do you wanna speak at a topic? And I don't. I I, you know. I think that looked fine, but I'm also open to making it a set policy.
Well, and that's interesting. That was a practice because I didn't change the language and the procedures on that.
Yeah.
I think it had already said on both uh, agenda and non-agenda issues.
Yeah, okay.
And Dan might have some feedback. The one thing I could see is, you know, now you've had your staff presentation and now you have. Um, members of the audience kind of wanting to have a back and forth, right? Because you're in discussion mode, you're no longer in like. Receiving information mode, it might, people might feel that they're more of a participant in the conversation than they are if you have them at business.
Exactly.
But um, but I don't know that there's a particular reason why it needs to be one way or the other.
So maybe the, as Megan suggested, I say, look, we're we're gonna talk about this in an hour. We'd love to have your active engagement at that time or promise we won't forget in a half. You didn't go either way, that's.
Dan, do you have a, do you have feedback on best practices for this?
Um, for for my money, if there's gonna be public testimony or a hearing on a particular item that's uh, later on on the agenda. I mean, you really want the testimony to be down in that period, in that segment, uh, so that you can take it all in and evaluate it. People sometimes testify based on what other people say. And so that's how that works out, and if you allow a lot of people to kind of show up early and just kind of make these kind of. Uh, out of the blue type testimony uh, statements at the public comment period. It becomes number one, kind of disjointed from your deliberation and discussion. And also, if there's gonna be a record of some sort put together. You know, they're not gonna be, those comments are not gonna be part of the the record of that agenda item. Um, so that's why we used to have in here that uh, you can, you can provide public comments on. A matter that's not already set for taking public testimony or set for public hearing later on on the agenda. Um. So.
In our view, over to a flexibility, perhaps the audible would be like, oh. There's seven people here.
Right.
To talk about. This item, let's move this item up.
Very much.
You could do that.
It's gonna feel, an opponent will perceive it as punitive. Oh, you're all here to talk about that, but you gotta put in your ninety minutes to wait, then we're gonna, that doesn't feel good to anybody. So maybe that would be an audible situation, because thank you for your point, Dan, capturing it together, not just for quasi judicial, but for all.
Yeah.
That's the nice thing about being the chair is that you can move those things up on the agenda.
That's right.
Yeah.
And and you can ask for a show of hands who's here to talk about this item, and if it's like everybody, then you can.
Our sheet, our sheet has topic, so that we we help ourselves in that. Wow.
Great.
Cool.
All right, anything else on on this?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
It doesn't feel like we should put you after mayor council.
Well, I thought I was the last thing, so.
I mean, maybe we'd want that.
The wrap up.
But I feel like, I mean, council call to me feels like. Truly like, hey, whatever you guys got, that feels like after you.
Mm hmm.
That feels like a trailing off kind of thing. And report of committees, again, in the before times, when I departed in nineteen, we had report of committees, so some. Procedural practice changed and I don't know if that was intentional or. Was it hard to keep track of like, wait, we have a meeting? Mark, do you remember?
Well, I I like city manager by city recorder, I think, as well. That would be my suggestion.
Thanks.
One thing before we leave the public comment period um, segment, there's a a new suggestion here that. People make public comments and with the consensus of council, um. Uh, staff can be directed to report back. I, again, I don't like it consensus of council, sounds like a decision, sounds like an action item. So I would say, you know, it's kind of the the mayor's prerogative to decide whether warrants. Um, you know, staff looking into and getting back, and oftentimes, that's all the person wants is that. That the the mayor's gonna make the public works director take their call or her look at this in the morning, and and I think the mayor can just do that.
Great.
Thank you. I have one more thing on public comments. Uh, and I can think of reasons why you wouldn't want to do this, but some people have complained about. Well, if I don't come in uh, in person, then I'm not promoted to being uh, on video, I think that's unfair. Of course, I could think of reasons why you don't want to just promote somebody video, you can't see him, et cetera. Um, but is there any precedent or guidance on on that when someone wants to speak for three minutes on video versus audio?
Yeah, so that is a question that, uh, I think. Uh, during pandemic times, the city had started with folks could speak. Um, but their video wouldn't be shown. I think that was probably like a kind of a safe and conservative issue. Uh, starting this year, we have decided that both for planning commission and well, and the first budget committee, when we have it. Uh, and for council that we would allow people to have their video because the city reporter has the, you know, if there were issues, uh, has the ability to turn somebody's camera off.
Okay.
So we, yeah, yeah, you, if you remember planning commission, we did get some of those complaints from.
We did, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
Wanted to be sensitive to that. So that was just an internal decision. I consulted with the mayor, but just made that decision.
Okay, doesn't need to be noted anywhere.
I don't think so. Great.
Good.
Anything else on this?
So, that's one. Right here, you you've collapsed section four. Uh, how much extension floors on this?
So section four was, actually has two pieces, right? Agenda content and the order of business and then agenda preparation. Right, and some of, so in this piece. Um. I took out a, a lot of the language felt very operational, like when is the deadline, you know?
Is there a next slide for this or?
No, uh, yeah, um, that was it, just this agenda preparation. So um, if you had any comments or thoughts on this piece, I just thought a lot of it was just like, when is the due date for, to get your uh, agenda items into the city recorder? Well, Jen wanted that to be like way earlier, as I think we just cut some of that stuff out. Any questions or thoughts on agenda preparation?
Um, in in paragraph four dot one E, you had put in. Um, explicit three minutes per person and fifteen minutes total.
So back to your business.
Was to just mushy that a little bit, yeah.
So with um. So this is business from the audience. Right?
That doesn't seem like in fact how we do it. If there's twenty people that saw it. I say, please don't take three minutes, please take two.
Mm hmm.
And we spent forty minutes. I don't think we want fifteen.
Well, I. I mean, w- we've had meetings where it's, that's gone, that part has been an hour long, right? So I I think that it's. Just you as the, you as the presiding person will say, okay, there's four people, so let's go to two minutes, or there's two people, so you can have three minutes. So I, uh, my suggestion is just, that's up to the mayor to sort of decide on the, on the. In the spur of the moment, how much time we have to do that.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, is the language in there is if additional time is needed, the presiding officer will determine the need an additional time limit. Is is that? Covering it or do you want something else, Mark?
Well, I mean, why does it say that? What's the point of that?
Yeah, so I just said each person will be given a time to present comments and the council may define a maximum time allotted to business from the audience, so.
So you could decide that day, you know, two minutes, everybody gets five minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
It's so situational, yeah.
I don't know if we need to set a particular time limit as opposed to saying the chair controls the time.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And I feel like this could, but I mean, groups with like comments will be asked, like it, I think that much of this is helpful, just the, the aggregate number doesn't make sense.
Sure. Great.
Thank you, Mark. Sorry, I kind of jumped ahead.
No, and actually, I'm councillor and or mayor, I'm glad that councillor Zandula brought that up because I had one more topic for business of the audience, and that is, uh, I guess, a legal question, which is. Do we need to require people to state their address now that things are on video? I think a little bit more um, concerned about people's privacy. Uh, and I don't know that we've actually been requiring people to state their name and address, which I think is required by our procedures.
Right.
Is it a legal requirement?
There, no, there's no state law requirement, and um, in fact, I've never, it rubber hits the road if they say, look, I'm not gonna give it. Are you gonna deny them their opportunity to uh, address their elected government? And under the the first amendment, you really can't add something like that. Um, so I think, I'm trying to think why the address requirement was in there. I think it's just so you have a notion as to. Whether this person is one of your constituents or not.
This is kind of a pet peeve of mine. I can't tell you how many times you guys probably. Hey, Paul, I'm so glad you're mayor, I voted for you. I'm like, I know for fact, we want to bear tribe, like. You didn't vote for me, you're pretending like you did, so in river with the county and city being the same, people like, hey, I'm here from Hoodred, like, dude, you're in Parkdale.
I had that conversation Saturday with somebody.
City resident is a relevant thing. I don't think, like, people will people slay to the fire on it, but that's a meaningful distinction.
Yeah, I I really remember that being meaningful during short-term rental debates and and all of that, understanding if you were in town or out of town was especially important. All right, um, so yeah, I mean. Maybe if you're a city resident or not.
Yeah.
Is meaningful um, versus the actual address, but I think.
I think.
That is meaningful.
I think the other option I might have for you is that um, someone needs to provide their address to the city recorder, but doesn't need to say it while standing here.
Mm hmm.
Which, again, as Dan says, I don't know that you have any power to, you know, require that, but. As I think about the ability, it's easy to testify from anywhere. If you had something that really went viral and now you've got folks from Florida and Texas coming, you know, to testify for however many minutes you give them. You might want to have, you know, a requirement of an address.
What if I was someone else, like, hey, please come up and tell us your name and what part of the city you live in, something I.
Yeah.
Would would it be okay uh, just to ask? Uh, people get provided if they're residents of the city or not?
If they think they're residents.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would prefer that as well, just because we don't want to create a different or another barrier that would prevent people from coming to talk to council. There are individuals that are facing, uh, you know, being houseless in our community, and that is something that they. It might be difficult to share to be that level of vulnerability uh, on a public call like this.
It's always made me nervous.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great, if we.
So maybe we can just strike that and then leave it silence and. Or would you want to say you need to provide your address to the city recorder or some other kind of option? I mean, you can always ask people, right? When they come, you can ask them a question like, do you live in the city? What part do you live in?
Up to the discretion.
For most topics, uh, I don't think we're necessarily interested on, even if they're residents. Given whatever the topic is, there might be some topics, well, we're gonna be interested in that. And if we want to, we could ask, right, Dan?
Hmm.
Yes.
Yeah.
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 So.
Great.
Is that amenable?
Super, thank you for that.
Okay, Mark, you took us back to uh. We don't want to jump ahead or are we, everyone ready for five point one now?
Uh, um, can I mention one more thing on four point two, which is agenda preparation? Um, I heard from two counselors, uh, so that this is worth bringing up, four point two A, uh, had the city manager sets agenda for each council meeting. Um, and um, couple said, you know, the mayor, uh, should the mayor. Mayor has the power to put items on the agenda, or perhaps the city manager and the mayor set the agenda, that there's definitely a role for the mayor there, and. What would you all like that role to be? I had pulled out a bunch of language because I thought it was just um, operational, but I think we might want to add it back or put something new.
Suggest something like in consultation with the mayor. I mean, so, so you you do it, you say, hey, Paul, how's this sound? And Paul goes, wow, you know. Here's the vibe I'm getting, can we move this around or that around? I I think that that's a valuable part of your. Relationship with.
For sure.
Mayor, yeah.
Yeah, now if you have a po- power hungry mayor who like. You know, controls the agenda and won't allow anybody else to have anything on it or adds things that the rest of council doesn't want to discuss, that's that's the danger, but.
Granted.
Well, I think that person could just be outvoted by the rest.
That's very true, yeah.
And and this is, and this is addressed, a majority of council may directly recommend that item be placed on, so. So in consultation, I like that, that reflects what actually happens, I mean.
Great.
And say it, do that.
That works for me.
Right.
So.
Thanks.
And is that with the mayor or the presiding officer?
Presiding officer.
Great. Cool.
Um, I have just one other question on four point two, so the, I guess. Second C, um, deleted about adding things um, after the agenda has been completed and I'm. You know, that the whole thing is deleted and I'm, are we not allowed to ever add things after the agenda's been released, or is there a process we just don't need to describe? I feel like we do occasionally do that.
Usually the chair or whoever's in charge of setting the agenda would make those adjustments.
Where some, you know, something comes up, you know, we release the agenda on a Thursday, then something comes up Thursday after we send it or Friday, you know. Something I didn't think was gonna make it now has come in.
Yeah, that would be the presiding officer consultation, city manager.
Mm hmm.
That, that's perfect, exactly, it's the same, same process, the media right falls on Thursday night, we better talk about that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, or do we need somebody in the procedures saying that or not? Because we currently have it deleted.
Right.
One of the few requirements uh, under state law for these meetings is that the agenda be uh, posted and advertised prior to the meeting at least twenty-four hours. And so it doesn't say that you can't change it, it just because it has that. Uh, twenty-four hour requirement, sometimes local governments require more. But um, it imposes kind of a, it's an ob- But, um, it imposes kind of a, it's an obstacle to changing things and I always recommend, you know. Try not to change it, but if you have to, you have to. I mean, you even have at each one of these junctures on the agenda. Are there any additions or changes? And so it happens and sometimes things come up. Um, if there's time, I always tell Jen to go ahead and, uh. Po- put up an amended agenda online and post it at city hall and notify the local media. So that they have the uh, revised agenda and just do it that way. And if it's something that. Can wait, I s- I recommend just kick it over till the next meeting. But it can, it can change. You just should not get in the habit of these last minute, uh, changes or additions. That's all. And you don't. I have not seen it to be a problem here.
So I I like language about being discouraged. That feels.
Okay, so let's add piece, uh, I might find you in this a bit, but we can add add that sentiment back. Great. Anything else on section four? Awesome. Okay, I think it gets a little bit faster after this, although it all all depends on what you think of the word decorum. So section five, council discussion at public meetings. Uh, there's a general piece just about, um. About how councillors, uh, ask to be recognized. That's a just kind of mechanical piece. Love some of this vocabulary. You see, uh, section five point two has the word citizen, which I will correct. And then, uh, five point three, discussion and uh, decision making. Any thoughts on those three? Because I think five point four decorum and orders where I want to dive in. Not seeing anybody or I've put you to sleep entirely possible. Uh, so five point four, um, decorum. Um, which I thought was a really old fashioned word. Uh, and in my head is like, well, maybe we all have an understanding of what decorum is, but maybe there's, uh, some pieces here. Like in section, uh, the second B that's been crossed out, um, was one that I thought. Like that was overly specific about decorum, but maybe we need to have some examples of what decorum looks like. Um, and then you can see I've also, uh, added the application of door decorum to staff and other participants, which. Uh, I know, Dan, can we legally make people be decorious? Um, I believe that's the correct adjective. Decorous?
You can try. The the rubber hits the road, though, is if someone just kind of goes on a rant. What do you do about that? Can you expel them from the chamber? Can you like slap them around? Can you have the cops haul him out? Um, I've seen, you know, at city attorney meetings, we'll have these workshops on how bad can this get? And, um, so I've never seen it get that way in any of the meetings that, uh, of my clients. But that's where, you know, if someone kind of goes crazy. What what do you do about that? Um, and so this kind of puts everyone on their best behavior, lets them know that there are these. Rules of not attacking people verbally or personally, um. And I would just caution. I would just caution the the presiding officer before you have, you know, the cops taze them. Um, you know, let's let's have a little caucus and decide.
Several, several comments. I used to, I don't know if I do, have a button right here. It's the call the police.
I know we should, we should check that.
That's what I remember. Anyway, that I think it might be here, but I can't see it right. Um, twice I totally interrupted a testifier. Once when they called us a Nazi and I said, nope, you don't get to use that metaphor. That's not okay. I just cut him off and I don't remember honestly what happened next, but I cut him off. Another time, somebody absolutely was like, hey, it's been three minutes. Hey, hey, it's been three minutes. And I just got louder and louder until he stopped and then he stormed out. So that took care of that.
Self excluded.
And then the final thing that I, uh, my predecessor. Your predecessors, the leader company, you can always call a recess. So like at any moment. As people start getting, I can say, we stand in recess and I can walk off the stage. Like, that seems like a good tool that I've never had to use.
Right, and we've never been sued, so I think that those, um, tactics work.
So I guess at this point, like. That's how that's how bad I've seen it get.
Yeah.
Seems like so far we don't need to change any. Rules about tasers. Though we need it.
Right. Yeah, I think probably what we have here is okay if our city attorney is okay with with it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, no, I I I think that standard is good. Um, I did. I don't need the whole, you know, but calling for point of personal privilege, but in the the sense of, you know, training new councillors. Um, that the first sentence of the second B of councillor should not, uh, you know, personally attack her and impugn the motives of a speaker like is that? I made a question for the rest of council, is that a valuable?
I think that's worth saying.
This is what decorum means.
We get to use the word impugn, so that.
Which is always fun.
Yeah.
You can regulate the councillors' actions and behavior. I'm always nervous about regulating the publics. Um, because, you know, in these workshops I've seen, you know, even when people show up and they start swearing, you know, generally. You have to take it. That's not enough to, you know, have the speaker hauled out. Um, and that's when cities get sued. So you can regulate the other councillors and what they say or do because these are the council procedures.
What if we kept the entire paragraph five four B? I kind of like that. Right? Be specific, like that's all good stuff in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we, uh, again, we can do whatever we want, but it's hard for me to ever imagine though, like, I'm going to call for a point of personal privilege. Because I'm also never going to remember those words in a moment.
And I think if I look them up, a point of personal privilege can be, you know, I feel attacked, but also, um.
Isn't it like it's.
The thermostat like, or or I can't hear what the speaker is saying, or those are all the point of personal privilege. Uh, examples from.
It's a Roberts Rules of Order thing.
Yeah.
I like.
So that feels. I guess that feels way too specific because we're not lining out the rest of the Robert.
I like Megan's first sentence is everything else goes idea.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. All right, that was it for, I think for section five, section six. Um, similar to, you know, I said, let's just refer back to the ORS. A lot of this I thought. Uh, simply refer back to Roberts Rules of Order. Um, so the things I kept were the things that I thought were where you are perhaps straying from Robert Rules of Order. One thing, uh, I noted was in the passage in a tie, this is also in your charter. Is a motion passes only if it receives four or more votes regardless of the number of councillors present. So if there was something where. Um, only five of you were able to be here, it still would require four votes, not the simple majority of the people present. Just wanted to make sure that was. That was, you wanted to continue with that. Great, great, thanks. Any thoughts or questions on this?
But the other thing I don't like is, um, to make Roberts Rules of Order kind of binding. Um, kind of. A brine binding rules on the council, but rather, um, just kind of guidance. Just because Roberts Rules of Order has a lot, a lot, a lot of detail and picky procedures in it that. At many times will kind of. Force the discussion to grind to a halt when it's pretty clear what the what the council wants to do. And so that's why I I like it as just a kind of, you know, as guidance and endeavor to. Uh, comply with its requirements.
And statistically, the way that would work is, Dan, I think you're our parliamentarian.
That's correct.
And so if Doug thinks I'm running roughshod over his wishes, he would say, hey. Dan, I don't think what Paul's doing is right. Can you? Can you, where are we? Do we have a motion?
Pull out the book, yeah.
So that suggests in six one A that we change the word governed to guided.
Yeah, I like that better.
That was my question. Thanks, Mark.
Okay, uh, we're still in six point one.
Yeah.
Anything else? There's a bunch of stuff in. Four, five, six, you want to abandon that or guidance? This is where we're relying on guidance.
I. I think someone who knows a lot about parliamentary procedure made a comment, uh, to you and I today. That, uh, I think it was about withdrawals and amendments, which was. Um, once, um, I think once a motion was. Uh, made and seconded, it no longer belie- belonged to the mover. It belongs to the body. And so here where it's the withdraw, uh, a motion may be withdrawn by the mover at any time prior to the announcement of the result. I think it was a. Um, no, like that person no longer has ownership over it.
The council would have to vote.
Yes.
That wasn't me. Must have been somebody else.
Uh, I think Commissioner Babbitt sent you and I a note about this.
I didn't, I didn't, uh.
He's he's correct.
He's, so this is one where we could choose to continue to stray from Roberts Rules of Order here. We could, uh, just be silent on it and follow whatever Roberts Rules of Order say, or we could write this in compliance.
Which we could just remove it.
Yeah. Remove it as as indicated, right?
Uh, the six two, so I left that because I knew that was like, that felt special, like you had specifically chosen to do that. Okay, so I can just strike that one. Is that what I'm hearing?
I would say just try to, what we have to do is write it down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say strike it because especially once a motion is seconded. You know, it becomes very difficult for the mover to withdraw because it's clearly before the body at that point.
So be careful when you move. Don't move, you know, recklessly.
Yeah.
Great. Anything else on that? And maybe, uh, this is a piece where maybe Dan and I should sit down a little bit more detail and review the pieces that I had, uh. Pulled out, see if there's ones that we want to keep in here for your guidance.
Yeah, this is equivalent, but that's entire. I think it's. Only causes if it gets four or more and it fails in the event of a tie. There's no occasion which it gets four and ties.
Right.
So so don't need that sentence.
Okay. Delete the second sentence.
It could be a case of abstentions or that sort of thing if we only have six voting members. Alright.
Yeah, unless you had eight members. Oh.
What does postpone mean in this?
I think it has its own bylaws.
Oh, so it's good point. Dust, they talk about U R A, which has more members. Uh, but that's, we're not, that's not.
It has its own bylaws, which also need review, but maybe not.
Procedures or bylaws?
I was gonna say bylaws.
Maybe it's like the council procedures. Are in effect, in which case we need the.
I will research this. Yeah. Great.
Okay, there you go.
All right, we're getting close. Number seven. Uh, council relations and communications. I added a sentence here, which is I saw in a number of cities. Just that city council will respect the separation. It's the crux of our working relationship. Yep. Um, there was a piece here, I think this is, um, the new C. Which was somewhere else in this and I had put it here, which is simply. If an individual comes to you with a problem, please refer them to staff first before you encourage them to come here. Um, and then I had deleted D because it felt very, very specific and odd to me, but, um, you might wish to ke- keep, which is. Council doesn't express an opinion about work performance. To an employee or a public, you know, that's brought to the city manager. This the staff report to the city manager and that's management's role.
I think that's appropriate.
Think that's appropriate to keep. Great, I'm seeing a couple nods, so we'll keep that one.
Yeah, you don't want city councillors, uh, intervening in, uh, employment matters or performance matters like that.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. I just, for me, it was. Like, we're not delineating all of the things that you can't do, so it was strange to. Highlight that one, but that one is pretty important, so maybe it's worth keeping.
Right, I've seen, I've seen it become a big issue in city councils when some councillor is really mad at an employee or department head. They have to go through the mayor or that they have to go through the mayor.
I think it's a common stumbling block, so it feels worth calling out.
Great, yeah, I think when councillor Saunders said, as a tru- if this is a training tool for new councillors, that feels like a good piece to keep. Alright then, um, council relations with each other in public meetings. Um, this is just a real philosophical kind of statement that felt a little out of place in a procedural manual, but. Um, you know, of course, if you all wanted to keep it, I would, we could polish it.
No, it's an interesting using, but I'm not here to blow off them here.
I thought maybe it's a moment in time. Great, okay. Uh, then, uh, you might remember I had moved some pieces about the media up to the pieces about, um, the meetings. Uh. Then again, some things that I think are, I think are a little bit odd, you know, but you should be welcoming. Again, I have citizens who say to individuals or residents. Um, I would hope that you'd always be nice, that you don't have to be told that, but. There you go. Uh, I kept most of it. Anything else on that particular, um, section? Great, and we'll move to number eight, which is where I had moved a a couple pieces and added some things that I saw in other cities. Um, there was a long paragraph here about impartiality and fairness. I tried to boil that down into one sentence. Um, and then I I added conflict of interest because I don't think I saw that in other places. Um, except where you talked about like expertise content and stuff in in public hearings. Statement of economic interest, which, um, you all file. Uh, and then confidentiality, which is a whole section eleven, but I thought could be boiled down into one area. So I think when we get to section eleven, it has, um. It has confidential about mi- written materials and about af- uh, inside meetings or outside meetings, it'd be like one. Uh, one section about confidentiality, I think can cover them all.
Uh, um, Abigail, there's in the code of ethics, one, uh, the first item eight point one impartiality in fairness.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one thing that kind of bothers me is the impartiality. Um, that doesn't come from state law and, um, my observation over the years is that sometimes people are actually elected. To city council because they have strong opinions about something and they are very partial on those issues and that's okay.
Yeah, that's great. So I think, um, I have written an or I borrowed a new sentence from another area. That does not talk about, um, impartiality, but says that we will, uh. Have ethical conduct and assure fair and equal treatment of all persons, um, that come before council.
Yeah, dealing with people.
So it's just a title.
Yeah, so maybe it's.
Yes, a title.
So Dan, maybe you and I can pencil on what that. What that might. But that's a good point. You aren't hired to be, uh, you aren't elected to be impartial. Thanks. Anything else on this section, on section eight? Great, then section, uh, nine, I think is pretty simple. Who are the people that have to come to your meetings? Uh, section ten, this is a piece where wanted to, um. I think where you were most, uh, had strayed farthest from what the procedure said. You had adopted a process that I think is working well, so tried to articulate that here. In the filling vacancies, but first just starting with appointments, um, and removal, uh. This says something generic about, um. About not encouraging people by generally limiting the number of terms a citizen may serve on the same committee. Which I thought was really squishy. Either you make term limits. Or you are silent on the issue, but to say, we want to encourage people to. You know, not overstay their welcome was a strange, a strange piece.
I feel like it takes care of itself. When the renewal of someone's term on a body comes up. It's a very normal part of the conversation to say, okay, so they've been there forever, but get somebody new.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to be told.
I agree. I think, you know, so part of the new process we'd set up a few years ago was the, even if you're. Currently on the body, you'll reapply just to kind of make it an even shake. And so I don't think we have to actively be like, so you. We need to have a talk.
Right, great. That sounds good to me. Uh, so that sounds good and then, um.
Uh, on on the removal, Abigail, again, the consensus word has popped up.
Yeah.
And, um, my general, um, the way I draft these code provisions dealing that set up these committees is. Usually they are, uh, people serve, uh, by appointment from the mayor and. Uh, ratification or approval by the council and the same thing about removal. And so I don't really know. What consensus means? Is it everybody's present when the issue comes up or? It it just kind of, it's not majority rule.
Yeah, and for something as big as a removal, I think you need a more formal action than just nodding heads.
Yeah.
All of our. All of our, uh, committees are appointed by the mayor, correct?
And are confirmed by council.
Any commission we vote on, we're used to.
Mayor, can you turn your mic on? I'm having a hard time.
Thanks for saying, I'm sorry.
He's just sitting three feet away from it.
Thank you, Ben.
So would we not also just have the mayor?
So would we not also just have the mayor? Take away that appointment uh based on and have the council vote. Uh, on that as well then.
Right.
So would it be? Majority, the majority, you know, like four or more votes or majority of council or, I mean, the same, it's the same decision making authority we have everywhere else, it seems like.
Yeah, just say action of council.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Uh, Abigail, I had, I had a suggestion for uh. Ten dot two dot D where the second, the second sentence says. Okay, if the interview committee doesn't. Um, you know. Nominate someone or suggest someone um that the rest of the council can still say, well, I want to. I want to do an interview here, or I want to, you know, we want to make a motion and pick a different person. And I think that they should be able to do that. Um, and so I just am. Questioning the wording in the second half of that.
Hmm, hmm, yeah, and this is where I'm trying, this is brand new language, trying to reflect your current practice.
Right.
So. Uh, maybe it's. Um, yeah, council may still choose to. You know. They may choose to reject all the candidates. They could choose to interview, you know, hold a second round of interviews. Maybe there's something a little bit more generic there.
Right, right, yeah.
Thank you.
It'd be something like, you know, that that list and then like followed with like and any other action.
Yeah, absolutely. We want to give ourselves some flexibility. Great. Uh, and then one uh counselor, Counselor Saunders had brought up um the other D there that has been deleted. That says um prior to the date of interviews, the city recorder will report back whether a candidate is eligible to serve, and I don't think we've been. Um, verifying that most of the time it's pretty obvious, uh, but could add that back if you wanted to have that step done.
I mainly brought this up because I I believe like planning commission has specific rules of, you know, everyone needs to be a resident of the city, but maybe two people can be in the urban growth boundary, but only two and. So, and so again, like on the one hand, it should be obvious of like you live in Parkdale, you can't be on our planning commission, but like someone should presumably screen that. And I think it could be a quick screen if you live in Parkdale, but.
Right, the city boundaries are a little weird sometimes.
It should probably go above the interview paragraph.
Staff will determine how it goes, and the guts.
Oh, I like that. Yeah. Okay, yeah, because maybe it's also the interviewing committee instead of the recorder. Great, anything else on this piece? You say, I think this part needs a little bit more polishing, but we can work on that.
Right.
All right, then uh we get to filling, so this is, that section was specific to planning and budget. Um, now in filling vacancies on other committees, you just have this one sentence about the mayor doing it. Um, again, with the consent of consult, of council. To assume is a.
Were you, were you phrasing consent to action or whatever?
Yeah, that was my thought. And you have a.
Well, it doesn't say consensus, that was the problematic.
So the consent of council suggests that there's a formal vote or a formal approval by council.
Consensus is a bad word.
I mean, we could easily just say approval instead of consent to be.
Well, I mean, let's be clear here. I I appointed a judge. That was kind of. And I want to be really clear. Okay, what's the deal? I appointed and then you guys. Consent, or is it a vote, or and it went fine, but be really clear about where that power arises, it's not awkward that I'm like.
I always, in the code, I would call it confirm.
So you're putting it forward, bringing the name forward.
And you'd be putting a name forward, we'd all affirm or deny.
Yeah. That the right amount of powers, I feel like the right amount. Like, I'm not just like floating a name, like I say, applied and I read their stuff and I was like, hey, I. Unless you guys like get you fit, I'm going to appoint you, Joe.
That's the same way we make all of our other decisions is. Four plus.
Well, see, then that's different. If it's, if it's, if it's the champion, that's fine.
Hmm, yeah, are you recommending appointment or are you actually?
I mean, what it says is a point percent. Do we like that?
I guess, so like thinking through, I think it's worked fine thus far, but you know, let's say we suddenly have a council that all hates each other. Um, and and the mayor puts a name forward that we all think is hot garbage and like. Does, does? The majority of council get to say, no, mayor, you don't get to appoint this person.
That's the question.
Okay.
Yes, it usually it comes up in the removal too. That's, that's where the rubber, I've seen a rubber hit the road. Where the mayor and the council are apart on a particular person who the mayor wants booted off a committee or the planning commission.
Hmm.
See, removal feels like an action of council to me, like the mayor doesn't get to kick somebody off. Should the mayor get to appoint?
I think this should be the same process.
I mean, I. Same process either for adding or subtracting.
I guess I don't have a strong opinion about like, oh, if the mayor gets to a point, as long as four or more counselors get to approve or deny that appointment.
I would agree with that, and I would go with approval of council rather than consent of council, council.
Could be three or more.
Uh, okay, approval.
Okay. Great, well, we'll work through that and like, say, you get another chance to see this.
This is going to feed right into ten point four A.
Yeah, for example, we wouldn't necessarily have. A rogue mayor or something, just running off, doing all sorts of.
Yeah. I say, we we write these for, you know, the bad days, not, not the routine day, so.
But so basically the same thing, but the way I was reading that paragraph is the mayor gets to a point. No consent of council, um, but the mayor can only remove with consensus of council, so we've already got the consensus word. Um, and so I'd love to clarify that it presumably, assuming the rest of the council agrees. Um, both of the appointment and the removal is again, mayor points or removes with the. Uh, approval is, I think, what we just said.
Hmm, you did.
Council.
Yeah, I I think that's best.
Great.
Great.
Yeah, what's left?
The power is.
Dabble in the seventy of pieces like, and then you all, we all put together like Voltron and we're such a mess.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Uh, section eleven, you see, I crossed lots of that out because I have condensed it and moved it to other sections. Uh, same with section twelve. Um, there's one piece there, I think about um, the media is not allowed to tape or video um executive sessions, I think I need to move. I need to keep that sentence and move it to the appropriate place. And then um thirteen is very short. You can suspend or amend your rules. Great.
Great.
And then my very last question, and um and I've asked, while we're on break, I asked our um planning director to also. Do a little more research on this, but you have an appendix that talks about your procedure for public hearings, and I didn't know if that was an intentional. Piece to keep that separate. It's not referred to in the. The procedures, so it either say the procedure should refer to the appendix, or the stuff in the appendix should be incorporated into the procedures.
I like the latter of the two.
I'm going to guess that maybe these were done separately or at a later date, or something happened that they were, that they're. They're outside.
Can you just make it section fourteen?
We can do that. Uh, I think the other option is there is an area where we talk about public hearings, and so we could put this process in there.
I would, yeah, adding it in there.
Incorporating it, yeah, thanks.
Great, in this piece, I didn't have particular comments. Um, I do think that Dustin and Dan need to review this, make sure this is still valid.
Excellent.
All right, with that, you have made the first pass through this.
Good work.
Oh.
Uh, ten point four. The. The appointees to committees or whatever are required to report to council on significant and important activities.
Hmm.
Um. I don't care about the second half of that sentence, but it it does seem like, again, in the training people on what their role is, it's like, yes, you should. You're not just attending and listening for fun, you're communicating with the rest of the body.
Purpose. Yeah, yeah, we can keep that. Thank you.
And that's not a D, that's a part of Ds.
I think it goes wherever I just, so you could know what page I was on.
Yeah, maybe it's just incorporated in that. And uh, Counselor Dan Miller had, since we're back here, had sent me a note about um, I think it's ten point four A. Just to note, sometimes it's not a hundred percent the city's decision. We nominate somebody and then the, you know, that board may um actually like. Approve or.
They have our friend Maggie. We'll see.
That's right. Yep, so uh, we can clean up all of that.
Wow.
So I will take all of this. Uh, Dustin, Dan, city reporter Jen, I want to say thanks to Jen, who took two passes through all of this to give comments before you saw it, so she made it much better. Um, we will review this, probably take a month before we get it back to you, and then we can um, we can do pieces of this again. All right, well, I really appreciate this.
Okay, so we're still on the old. The old agenda strategy, so the next thing is not that city managers report.
Yeah, I will note, however, if you notice this, um, because at your last meeting, you adopted your um. City council work plan that included goals and priorities that uh you have a new template for your. For your memos, your packet includes, first of all, this year, we started with a logo because we really want to identify these were city um, city of Hood River, and then with this one. Uh, our city recorder has been working with um Roundtree Roots to create a new template for you, and we wanted to mark any time uh an agenda item meets. Or um forwards any of your council goals.
And it's not really the very first one.
I like it.
I know. Although I would say this is a well maintained community, right? Well maintained meeting makes for a good community, so. Sorry about that. Please continue.
Great, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Call, is that right? So I uh, I already did the proclamation to save Ms. McDonald a little time. Two important announcements. One is pie with the mayor is back. Sunday at twelve thirty at Betty's, come on down after church or whatever you do, twelve thirty on Sunday at Betty's. Um. And look forward to it. Uh, and then. Abigail and I talked a little bit. Evaluations. Uh, the council has been very timely in keeping up with. The evaluations of the city manager, it's not until November, but I think that Dan has not been evaluated recently, and. Judge Cleveland has not been evaluated recently, and Dan said, I understand that he would welcome that. So I will be proceeding with staff to figure out a good tool to do that. I think it's such an important. Role that volunteer boards often slack on, so I'll be moving ahead with that. And with that, uh, we'll start online Gladys Council Call.
No updates from me, Mayor, thank you.
How's your foot?
Still broken.
Oh dang it.
Yeah, I have a new cast though, and so it's a nice.
Oh, my god.
That's pretty.
Well, I hope the pain's all right and the itching and whatnot. Okay, good.
We should get some signatures on that cast.
I know, um, pretty soon. I will, I will head on down in person and maybe you guys can all sign it for me.
Pie with the mayor, cast signing with the mayor.
Twelve thirty on Sunday.
Mark.
Uh, I I just had one thing, a a friend and coworker of mine sent a email to myself and Abigail. Um, they are young parents of a medically complex son with a Prader Willi. Uh, syndrome and and tomorrow is rare diseases day and and they just asked to um. You know, if. Uh, way too late, but they. Their their heart was in the right place and they asked if the city could do a proclamation for supporting parents, uh, you know, and and thinking of them on a, on. Rare diseases day, and and I think it's a great idea. I think that next year we'll we'll get it in time to for the city. You know, for the council to do a proclamation, but um I will do a sub proclamation now, and and you know, these are people that are. Really heroes, right? They're, they're, they're dealing with stuff that. No one could prepare them for, and and they're doing it with love and they're doing it with. Thing and and us as a community, giving them pats on the back and helping them when we can is 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 what makes our community a community, so um. Uh, I would just. Say we can nod and say, good work, folks, for for that, so um.
Thank you, Mark.
I, I don't. I don't have anything else.
Great. Great. Uh, something I forgot last time we did this was at one of the. I remember which O dot call it was now. Um. They decided to move up or more highly recommend the additional funding for the cat bus. Uh, in between here and Portland. Um, kind of dash for another one point four. Uh, million and that, and so they, that that group was highly supportive of that being a thing, and so they. Moved that up on the priority list of things to ask for from the large pile of money that. It would supposedly be available. Uh, forgot to mention that last time. And then everything else is just stuff that we can discuss during actual deliberations on things.
Um, yeah, I kind of mentioned it earlier, but I I did follow up from last meeting. I did look at the D L C D advisory committee um. Time commitment and and said it would work, and so I am um submitting an application. They're due, I think, March eighth, so I'm still drafting the. Make myself sound really good aspects, uh, because I do not do that well. Um, and then I attended the county meeting last week. Um, they got the same FEMA presentation, energy council update. Um, I don't think anything else super relevant. They did the S E T S list from um the KED. And so, yeah, nothing major from our end, but.
I have nothing to report today. I know.
That brings us to the end of our old school clunky agenda that will be soon streamlined and improved. Anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good night. Good night.
I know.